This is an official government hearing, and so please show respect for each, for one another. And applause and that sort of thing is really sort of out of order, so don't, don't do that. If you hear somebody that you like, just applaud to yourself, but don't, don't disrupt the, the meeting. Appreciate that, because we want to have a, a, a good respectful evening. We are, we have a number of items on the agenda, and how we're going to handle that is we'll give the applicant 15 minutes to make their case, and then we'll give the, somebody that, that is opposed to the applicant, we'll give them another 15 minutes to make their case, and then we'll take three-minute testimonies. That, that's how we're going to work that, and then we'll give five minutes as rebuttal to the applicant, to rebut the testimony and, and the other testimony. All right, first I need to find out, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, we have some unfinished business that we need to take up. I'll, I'll accept a motion to remove unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have now for discussion applicant, application number 202-200-489V, Vicki Christie, and...
Mr. Chair, if I may, before staff starts with the staff report, I'm going to have to recuse myself. I'm going to be testifying, providing individual testimony on this one, so I'm going to step down from the dais and I'll...
You get three minutes.
I only get three minutes, I know you'll cut me off, too.
Yes, and, but in that regard, I will open the public hearing on application 202-200-489V, Vicki Christie, okay? We'll first hear a staff report.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2022-00489V is a variance to rebuild a single-family dwelling within the 100-foot setback of the Boise River Greenway Overlay District. The property contains, let me, I'm having some technical issues here.
Do we need to get IT guy up here? Are we ready?
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 Ready for the party?
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'll start again. So, project number 2022-00489V is a variance to rebuild a single-family dwelling within the 100-foot setback of the Boise River Greenway Overlay District. The property contains 3.89 acres and is located at 4253 West Old Valley Road in the rural-urban transition district. The applicant has applied for variance to rebuild the single-family dwelling within the 100-foot setback of the Boise River Greenway Overlay District. The Boise-Greenway Overlay District is applicable to lands situated between the Boise River and area 100 feet outside of imperil to the boundary of the Boise River floodway. The new house will be built close to the same location on the property as the original house. In order to grant variance, there are three findings that need to be made. The first finding is the variance should not grant a rare or special privilege as not otherwise allowed in the base district. Two, the variance relieves undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. And three, the variance should not grant, be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Staff finds that the variance would not constitute granting of a special privilege because a single-family dwelling is a principal permitted use in the rural-urban transition district. Staff finds that the variance relieves undue hardship due to characteristics of the site resulting from the boundary of the Boise River floodway, width of the property, and riparian vegetation on the property. The property has an irregular shape as the northern portion of the property is very narrow with the width ranging from low over 100 feet to approximately 200 feet. The southern two-thirds of the property consists of extensive riparian vegetation, including many trees. The most logical place to build on the property is within the existing clearing. Due to the property's width, there's no place to build in the clearing that is outside of the 100-foot Boise River Greenway Overlay setback. And the kind of lyre pink band line here is the, what would be the Boise River Greenway Overlay area, so you can kind of see with existing home, you know, it's totally within this northern portion of the property. In addition to that, it would also be hard, we have a 25-foot side yard, rear yard, side yard setback on the northern side, and it'd be hard to build between that overlay district and the 25-foot setback. Staff finds that the variance is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare because the applicant will be required to secure a building permit to rebuild the new single-family dwelling. A neighboring property owner did provide comments on this application. They've mentioned that the new house would be less than 75 feet from their house, and the proposed second-story level will look right into their property. They've asked that any windows on that side of the house be placed high enough as to allow light, but not a direct sign to their home. They would also like for the applicant to explore for heavy construction traffic to come off of a paved, private road to the west of the property, South Adler Lane, due to the existing shared driveway being compromised by an irrigation culvert that has already been damaged by large trucks. In addition, the neighbor would like for no retail sales, events, or public access to the flower farm on the subject property. Other agencies have responded to the time extension, or to this application, did not express any concerns regarding the approval of the variance. And staff finds that this application complies with the Ada County Code and recommends approval to the board, and I'll stand for any questions.
All right, are there any questions?
Not at this time.
I don't have any questions either, so would Vicki Christie like to testify? Present? Okay. Okay, you know the rules.
Yes.
Okay.
I think. So, I'm Vicki Christie, 1806 North Tuscaloosa Drive Avenue in Eagle. Thank you for hearing this case. I also want to thank Ada County staff, especially Kyle Belinsky and Brent Danielson for navigating me through this process the last few months and putting up with all my questions, because there have been several. As Brent mentioned, we're asking for a variance to rebuild the home at 4253 Old Valley Road, which is our family property, so that we can have a place that our grandchildren can come enjoy, enjoy for many years to come. We had planned to do extensive remodel due to the really bad shape that this house was in when we purchased it. We contacted a couple of architects and builders to help us determine how to move forward with this remodel. We were informed that this home's foundation was not up to standards, and to seek the opinion of a structural engineer. We did have a structural engineer come out to the property, and the conclusion was that this home that was built in 1922 was not up to standards, and for the safety of the family, it would be best to remove the existing home and, and rebuild a new one. We had an architect draw up some preliminary plans with garage added to it, and so I called Ada County to see if we could go ahead and add an upstairs over the garage for a little extra room for family. They said yes, that's fine, as long as the height does not exceed 35 feet. So, I had the architect draw up some preliminary plans, and then I sent them over to Ada County to see if that looked okay before we paid for the final plans, and they said, yeah, it looks good, we can go ahead and move forward. We then found out that due to the 100-foot Greenway setback, we would have to apply for variance, so that's why we're here today. We just want to make this property a beautiful place for our family, for the neighbors, to enjoy for a long time. That's it.
Okay. Any questions? You have any questions, Commissioner?
I don't think so.
Okay, I don't have any questions, so thank you.
Okay.
All right, is there anyone here in opposition? If not, we have several that want to testify. I think Margaret Farning? Do you want, did you want, did you want to speak?
Hello.
Aye.
We live on the property adjoining there, it's the long area to the west, and we've been there since 1990, and I, I like the idea of a single dwelling for that property and to keep the integrity of the river, because sometimes people disregard the river coming through, and, and I, I like the idea of keeping it, all the houses in that area are very, not pretentious, single, one-story homes, and from the point of view of what you see from the homes, it makes it feel very rural, and I know growth isn't growing, but I would like to keep that pocket, that little oasis, so I'm confident that their plans, you know, will stay in that, and that's why I'm here, just to make certain that we keep that rural aspect of the area.
All right, you don't, and you don't see any detri, any, any rationale for, for denying the application, then?
No, my only concern, and I think they addressed it, is I don't want that second floor to be too high to keep that view of the river, so we don't get it blocked by, you know, building up obstructions.
All right, any, any, any other questions? All right, thank you. Okay, we have another Fanning. I don't, I can't, I can't read the name.
Patrick.
Patrick, there you go.
As my spouse said, we've lived there for 30 years, next to an occupied, single-family residence on the applicant's property, and after 30 years, I see no reason to oppose the continuance of it, and so we did have some concerns about the second story, but they've been adequately addressed if they build it according to their plan, so we, we have no objection.
Okay, we have Chad Hersh?
Hirsch, yeah.
All right. Could you state your name for the record?
My name is Chad Hirsch, and I live on the east side, and I am in favor of their continuing on with the single-family dwelling, and my one concern was kind of like the Fannings with this two-story house coming in there. I would, I addressed it to them that I would prefer not to have a window that would look directly over my fence line, since their house is going to be very close to my, my, my fence line on the east side, and they were, have been very accommodating, saying that they were going to look into something different than a window that would kind of invade privacy, so any kind of lighting situation would be fine, in my opinion on that, and they've been accommodating for that, so, and as long as the lane is continued on as usage for just a single-family home, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Okay, we now have Kendra Kenyon.
Commissioner Kenyon.
Commissioner Kendra Kenyon, state your name for the record.
Kendra Kenyon, thank you. I just wanted to make it a little bit more formal, we are, I think all of us are in agreeance that this is a great thing, we're excited to have a home, single-family home built there and occupied. This property's been sort of vacant for about four or five years, so that'll be great. I'm just pointing out it is a single-family dirt, or a single-lane dirt lane that's very narrow, and so just want to ask the applicants that as they have construction trucks coming in and out, there's old dogs, there's old people out there, it's very peaceful, just to make sure that they're going slowly and paying attention out there, because it doesn't get used that often, and it dead-ends into our three properties down on the river. And I just, if I could, approach the dais, I'd like to include this as an exhibit to kind of show why we're asking for a condition of approval, that the second story, if it be granted, that it doesn't have a window that looks right down on the property, and you'll see why.
Okay, sure.
So, you'll see once they go, that's their roof line, so once they go up, you can see where the fence is, it's super close to the house.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions, Commissioner?
So, when, when they rebuild it, then the garage, the second, if there's a second story, the window would be facing towards the yard?
Yeah, pretty close, yeah.
Okay.
So, just asking for that be a condition of approval, yeah. It could, like a sky, like a higher window that allows light in, but that a person can't just be looking right down into our yard.
That's not one of the conditions in the staff report, right?
No, I think it would need to be added.
Okay, to add that, that, that the 35 feet, isn't that the height?
Mr. Chairman, you are correct. The maximum height for a single-family dwelling in the RUT district is 35 feet.
And, and you're asking, with, without a window, looking, looking in, into your property?
Yeah, the 35 feet is fine, as, as long as it doesn't have the big window, right? And then I just wanted verification from staff, if I may, that the new footprint isn't coming any closer to the property. I think Brent, you mentioned it's actually going to be a little bit to the riverside?
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, kind of been looking at the site plan when I kind of measured it out with the, the new, the old, existing dwelling is about 34 feet from the closest part of Commissioner Kenyon's property line, and then the new house is going to be around 41 feet from the closest part to the property line.
Okay, so not closer, a little bit further away, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this application? If not, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
What?
Before we close the public hearing, we want to enter Commissioner Kenyon's lay exhibit, the picture, and that's going to be exhibit number 31.
Okay.
Could we have the applicant close out?
Oh, yeah, if you'd like to close out, you're welcome to.
Yes. So, I just wanted to say, I, we want to be the best neighbors that there are, but we did get a call from our architect, and due to the egress, we have to have a window there, it's the law for fire safety, but what we can do is put in opaque glass, which we have an opaque glass window by our garden tub, and you cannot see out of it, and you can't see in, and we would definitely be willing to do that. We want to comply, and we want to do everything we can, but the architect said by law, we have to have a window there for safety. So, it would still open, you just wouldn't be able to see.
Because it'd be opaque.
And it would be an opaque glass.
Kind of like a bathroom window.
What is that? It'd be a bedroom window, if that's a bedroom there?
Right.
An extra bedroom, but yeah, you can still get opaque glass for that.
Okay.
And the...
Mr. Chair, yeah, so, well, let me direct that to staff, does that sound like that would be illegal to not have the window there, based on what she said?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, so that's part of the building code, so if that room is being used as a bedroom, and I'm not a building official, I just know just a little bit, enough to get me in trouble. Basically, if you have a bedroom, you have to have a, I think, two methods to get out of the bedroom if there's a fire, so obviously you have the traditional, you know, doorway and stairs to get out, and then you'd also have to have a window in addition to this normal interior entrance to get out of the room, and so that's probably why the window, why the architect said that the window would be needed for ingress and egress.
So, to the applicant, that's going to be a bedroom, then?
It is a bedroom, yes. Yes.
And I'm assuming that the, the code would dictate how high off the floor the window would be, because if it's too high up, then you couldn't get out. Well, would you be, would you be amenable to us amending the conditions of approval to require that it's opaque glass?
Yeah, we definitely would do that, yes. We were ready to do the skylight one until we heard from the architect, and he said we can't, so we are definitely willing to do, you know, anything in our means to help the neighbors feel more private, because we, we want our privacy, and we understand that.
Sure.
Definitely.
And then you heard previous testimony just about traffic, construction traffic going up the, the road?
Yes, yes. So, my son did at one point redo that and put in some supporting steel plates to make it a little bit stronger going over there, but I definitely agree that, you know, it's one lane, and people need to be aware to go slow and watch for dogs and elderly, definitely. We understand that.
Are you going to be able to keep an eye on the, the contractors and just kind of monitor, and if they aren't, aren't aware of that, you can talk to them and let them know?
Yes, there'll be a chance we may be on the property, so we'll be able to monitor everything that goes on there.
Okay. I don't think I had any other questions.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing on, let's see, on the application of 202-200-489V. The public hearing is closed. So, Commissioner Kenyon has recused herself. I'm voting on this, so it's, do we have a motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, you know, it sounds like everybody's pretty, pretty amenable to... Well, Mr. Chair, you know, it sounds like everybody's pretty, pretty amenable to, you know, respecting each other's privacy, and the applicant said that they wouldn't object to putting an additional condition of approval to require that it be opaque glass to respect the neighbor's privacy, considering that the window is required by the fire code or the building code. It, it sounds like a fairly reasonable compromise.
So do you have a motion?
Well, I would move then to, I guess, amend the findings of, or the conditions of approval to include a opaque window for privacy purposes.
Okay. All right. And you want, did your motion, you wanted to include, to approve the application?
And to, yes, to approve the application with the additional condition of approval of an opaque window.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Is there further discussion? Is that clear?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, having no further discussion, all in favor say aye, all right?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we begin the next item, I know that we may be still having the technical difficulty with our WebEx broadcast. If we could pause, if that's acceptable, for a moment, to let our IT guy help us out?
Okay, we'll do that, pause for a moment.
The record is paused.
Thanks, everybody.
Did you go talk to him, or somebody talked, somebody pushed that?
Two neighbors, my, yeah.
Did that one out there yet?
I think staff may have mentioned it too. Brent did a really good job, yeah.
Okay, well, that's good. One less controversy.
Margaret, little Margaret, she's got a dog that's bigger than she is. It's huge. And she walks up the lane to get her mail, you know, and back, and she can barely hold on to the dog, and so, you know, sometimes the construction truck, shh, down there.
They were jetting down there.
Yeah, we'll probably end up putting a five mile an hour sign or something up too, to help with it.
Maybe they could put some dark tint on the opaque window, too?
Yeah.
Something like that.
But, you know, we've been there three generations, family three generations, four, if you count my best friend's grandparents built it. And...
Like the logs, the log rafter, or what do you call them, the columns?
Yeah, the juniper columns, yeah, those are cool.
So it's always just been really secluded, kind of a little retreat, and so when they run it up two stories, we're like, yeah.
Well, at least she sounds amenable to working with neighbors, it's not a fight.
He says one thing and does the other, I don't know. No, she's, she's, she's really cool, yeah. Actually, it's her son that owns it.
Oh, really?
Son owns it. They were going to do a family retreat. They've been moving here around for three years, never did anything. Then they finally dismantled the house, it was on without permits. Cut down trees on the river without permits. Built a pond without permits. They were pretty nice, you know, but I put them on notice, and we can't do that anymore. So then they came up with this flower farm, built the house, and the house is great, but, you know.
About a flower farm.
Yeah, I know. So they immediately put up greenhouses. So the greenhouses are there, but they're still living there.
Pretty big, pretty good size? Almost four acres, that's a pretty good size.
It's, yeah, that pond that they filled in with debris, and they're using it for fire pit, takes up a big portion of that, so you can't build on it. The best in terms of environmentally friendly people.
Test, test.
Nesting birds out there, and the river habitat. Almost five years. The neighbors and I, we've been down there for like, you know, decades, decades.
Are we ready to go?
Yes, it looks like everything's working.
Okay.
Back on the record?
All right, we're back on the record then. Okay, we have, next up is application number 201-900-111-S-T-E, engineers. This is a time extension for a preliminary plat for Joint Fairview Cemetery Edition. We'll take it first, we'll, I'll open the public hearing on application 201-900-111-S-T-E, and we'll first hear from our staff.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2019-0011-S-te is a time extension for a preliminary plat for the Joint Fairview Cemetery Edition. The property is located at 7860 West McMillan Road. It contains one acre in the rural urban transition district. The cemetery is a public cemetery, is owned and managed by the Joint Fairview Cemetery District. The applicant is requesting for a two-year time extension for the preliminary plat for the Joint Fairview Cemetery Edition. The subdivision, which is Forest Cemetery, will contain 580 lots in the form of traditional burials, infant burials, garri niches, columbarium niches, and common lots. The applicant stated in their detail there that the time extension is needed due to the limited cyclical development funding for construction. The initial phase of construction has been completed, and the ACHD approach and roadway work was part of that initial phase. The second phase of the project includes completing the roadway surface, pathways, and landscaping. The design of this phase is not yet completed. This is the applicant's first board grant time extension. If the board were to approve of the time extension, it could be given until May 8, 2024. There are no neighbor comments on the time extension, and there is no agency opposition to this time extension either. And staff finds that this application complies with the county code, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions of staff?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Wish to comment? Okay. Go ahead. State your name for the record.
Alec Agarola, actress as well. No, okay. I'm a T.O. engineer, I'm a land use planner, just going to be here for any questions that you may have. Other than that, I'll keep it short and sweet.
I don't have any questions.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Can I go ahead?
So this is public, it's in a taxing district?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so the funding will come from, okay. And so mainly, it's just because of COVID and the increase in materials and trying to get them?
Commissioner Kenyon, yes, essentially, it's from COVID and increased construction costs. And so we get that, that taxed amount each year for funding for the construction, and we're limited with that funding, so only so much can be done each year. And it's been an ongoing struggle as the cost goes up for construction. And it's, it's getting done, but it's a slow and, slow and steady race. And we're getting there, but each year, there's only so much you can do with so much funds.
So are you able to open up a construction fund, like the county can do, and that's a way that we can save money for larger projects like this?
Commissioner Kenyon, I am not entirely sure about that.
Okay, you might want to check on that. It might be a vehicle for you to be able to save, yeah.
Okay. And I might just add, we just have essentially landscaping and pathways left to do, but the, the board, the cemetery board's looking at what their funding is for this upcoming year and to see how much longer that'll take, but we can look into that option.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is for 580 additional burial spaces, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. How much do you charge for those spaces?
Mr. Chairman, I am not entirely sure of the answer to that question. I meant to, I got a quick rundown about construction, about our, our plans, but I didn't get any quotes about prices for those lots. But that's, that's a, that's a good question.
That would, that would help pay for the cost of it.
Yes, yes. I mean, it could come after the fact with improvements as well, so.
Okay, well, is there any other, are there any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're good, thank you. Do we have anyone, anyone else would wish, would wish to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on application 2019-00111-S-T-E. What is the pleasure of the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think, hearing our testimony tonight, it looks like the applicant should be granted a time extension, and we could grant that till May 8, 2024, so I'll make that motion, and that's based on the testimony heard tonight and the conclusions of law that were provided.
Okay, do we have a second to motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion to grant the application. All in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is application 202-11101-744-S, Briggs Engineering. Before I open the public, the hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing on that application right now. So I'm opening the public hearing on application 202-101-744-S, Briggs Engineering, and I'll turn to the staff.
Yes, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you is preliminary plat for a two-lot subdivision located at 3797 South Rustler Lane. The applicant is Briggs Engineering. The subject property is a 10-acre lot, originally platted as Lot 7... Oh, I need to share my, I didn't share my screen? Maybe that's what's going on here. Sorry, folks, one sec. So excited to share this project with you, okay. All right, so... There we go. All right, so the sub, as mentioned before, the subject property is a 10-acre lot, originally platted as Lot 7, Block 1, of Stetson Estate Subdivision Number 2. It's located within the rural urban transition district, which allows for a minimum of five-acre lots. The preliminary plat consists of two five-acre lots to be accessed via the existing private road, Rustler Lane, which already meets Ada County Code requirements for a private road serving more than four lots. All reviewing agencies approved the project with standard conditions. The City of Meridian has requested a 25-foot temporary construction and permanent sewer easement, depicted here in red. The applicant has agreed to this as a condition of approval for the project. Some key conditions of approval in addition to that 25-foot easement I just mentioned are, the applicant and owner shall submit approval from the Boise Project Board of Control, and the applicant and/or owner shall submit a new maintenance agreement for the private road, South Western Lane, essentially including that additional lot that's being created through the subdivision process. In conclusion, staff and the planning and zoning commissioner recommend approval of the project, subject to the conditions of approval attached as Exhibit A in your packets, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions of our staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Leon, what's the turnaround for fire at the end of the lane? Where's that going to be located?
Yes. So let me pull up the vicinity map here. Chairman, Madam Commissioner, I apologize, there's the turnaround initially here for Rustler Lane, and then Rustler Lane, Rustler Lane actually extends further to the south that is not pictured here in, in the aerial that I've shown you, but there is an additional turnaround at the end of kind of that Rustler Lane extension that has already been established for the other lots within the project.
Okay, and is this in the, any of the concerned well areas, like the nitrate?
Yes, Madam Chair, Madam Commissioner, speaking with Zach Kirk, Ada County Engineer, this is in the nitrate priority area. It's not in an area of drilling concern. It is in an area of groundwater concern, which is affiliated with that nitrate priority area, but it's not in an area of water quantity concern, as in the IDWR. So Zach Kirk, the county engineer, has specified, as typical for projects like this, things that the future property owners and developers will have to do in order to comply with nitrate priority areas and, and areas of groundwater concern.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of our staff?
No.
Okay, does the applicant wish to testify?
Yes, this Dean Briggs, Briggs Engineering. Good evening, Dean. How's it going today? This is pretty simple. The owner has accepted all the conditions of approval, and we have met with the neighbors, and we're in concert with them. So I think it's a pretty simple project. I don't really think I need to add anything else unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions of Dean?
I don't have any.
Mr. Chair, okay. Okay, thank you. Are there anyone else that are in the audience who wish to testify on this application? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on application 202-101-744-S. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, I would move to approve application number 202-101-744-S, Briggs Engineering, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We will next take up for consideration application number 202-103-161-A, John Ropp. The, I will open the public hearing on that application, 202-103-161-A, John Ropp. This is an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's conditions, Commission's approval of a conditional use to construct a private cell tower for Suez Water. Property is located on South Pleasant Valley Road, and contains approximately 398 acres in the Rural Preservation District section.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would it be good to restate how we're going to process this and get through with the testimony?
Yes, we're going to allow the applicant 15 minutes after we hear a staff report and questions from the commission, as 15 minutes to present the case, and then we'll allow any, the original applicant 15 minutes to reply, and then we'll allow three-minute testimony from anyone that wishes to testify. We do have a number of people signed up here, and we, we do want to... If there's any applause or anything, we, please don't do that.
Mr. Chair, and just for further clarification, the reason we're allowing 15 minutes for the original applicant is because this is an appeal to this board, and it was first heard with planning and zoning, so this will be the first time that we actually hear the testimony, so we wanted to make sure that we had all the facts.
We want to get all the facts as, as a commission, so...
And, and just to clarify, there is an appellant and an applicant, and the appellant is the one appealing the original decision, so we sometimes get those two terms confused.
Yes, it's, sometimes can be confusing. All right.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Sharon. I guess, from staff's side, we'll also ask that if anyone in the audience has a question, please direct it to the director. If you want to know how proceedings are going, if you have a question about who's signed up, I know that the last time we had a presentation, there were a lot of folks approaching staff here at this podium, which is really tough for us to focus on what they're asking us to do or answer questions, so Richard Beck over here will, can I answer any procedural questions that you have or things like that, so just as a, just as a heads up. All right, so, Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. The item before you is an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit for a private cell tower or antenna. For Suez Water Idaho, the tower will be 80 feet tall and used to support the company's internal communications. The appellant is John Ropp, the original applicant is Suez. The next two slides summarize the appellant's argument for overturning the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval for this project. Zoning Commission's approval for this project. Staff's response is provided in italics below each point of the appellant's argument, so I will kind of read both and, and the staff's response is in italics just to let everyone know. So, the first point is that the original application is incomplete per the requirements of Ada County Code 8-5-3-114 Tower or Antenna Structure Commercial. So staff's response is that that is not the applicable section of code for this particular project, this is a private tower or antenna, so the materials that were identified as missing aren't required for the private towers. Second point is that there was an independent propagation study lacking from the application. This is not required for private towers or antennas. The third point was that there was lack of written evidence by an independent third party measuring, reporting frequency specific DBM measurements to determine power output, that the power output will not exceed minimum power necessary to carry out the communication desired. Again, this is not required for a tower antenna structure that is private, so again, that wouldn't have been included because we don't require that of these types of projects. Following with those points, there's no supporting documents demonstrating a need to review has been performed. This isn't required for private towers and antennas, nor has this been required by any of the agencies that were transmitted this application for review or comment. And finally, Ada County may deny the application based on its authority derived from the Idaho State Constitution and the Local Land Use Planning Act, not the Federal Communications Commission or the Federal Telecommunications Act. And so the response there is that this project has been reviewed by our code and it is, and our code is required to be in accord with the Idaho State Constitution and the Local Land Use Planning Act, so we are, staff's position and that of the P&amp;Z is that we, we did follow our code, which again is required to be in line with state legislation and state law as it relates to land use decisions. So now I'll give an overview of the project in greater detail. So here is a vicinity map. Project location is highlighted in red here near kind of these agricultural areas. It is a 398.5 acre site in the Rural Preservation District. The site is accessed via a gravel driveway that intersects Pleasant Valley Road down here to the south. The proposed location of the tower is approximately a half mile from that Pleasant Valley Road intersection. Surrounding uses in the immediate vicinity include agricultural uses and a quarry to the east. Zooming out a bit, the Birds of Prey Center is approximately 3,500 feet to the northwest, so highlighted here is the new tower location and the Birds of Prey property where the, the actual center is itself. The actual conservation area is approximately six miles to the southwest along the primarily Snake River area. Pictured here are the nearest residents in the area, which are the Calderon Estates Subdivision, they're approximately 4,500 feet to the northwest from the new tower location. As previously mentioned, the project consists of an 80 foot private antenna, tower for Suez. The new tower is shown here, it will be located in close proximity to an existing private tower on the same site. I would encourage you, if you have any questions as to why co-location or that sort of thing for the new tower equipment versus the old tower, I think we have Suez and the applicant here to answer those best for you, but there will be two towers on this site if ultimately approved. So some key conditions of approval placed on the project by the Planning and Zoning Commission are the applicant and or owner shall obtain a written verification from the Federal Aviation Administration, the Chief of the Idaho Bureau of Aeronautics and the Boise Airport. The project will require a building permit from Ada County and it will also require a final inspection from the Ada County Engineer. In conclusion, staff recommends that the appeal be denied and that the Planning and Zoning Commission approval of the project be upheld subject to the conditions of approval attached as Exhibit A, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for our staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Leon, did you say that there's a gravel road that's already built or going to be built for like fire truck access?
Yes, Chairman, Madam Commissioner, there's an existing gravel drive that serves the existing tower and there's a, a building on site as well. It intersects with Pleasant Valley Road down here, which is a public roadway that's improved with asphalt and, and everything that you would expect of a public roadway, and so yeah, it's about a half mile from this intersection into the site.
Okay, and did Birds of Prey, the peregrine fund, did they respond?
We received no comment from the Birds of Prey Center.
Okay, and you said that's about 3,500 feet away?
Yes, their actual property is directly adjacent though, so they would have been included in the, the radius notice, so the actual boundary of their property touches this, but the center itself is a good 3,500 feet away, so probably easier to highlight here. So this whole parcel here is part of the parcel that the project is located on and right here is the Birds of Prey parcel boundary, so they're directly adjacent, so they were included in our radius notice, which is up to 1,000 feet for a project like this.
Okay, thank you.
How many homes are within a radius of the property?
Well, we could count them real quick, Chairman, I, we've got the Calderon Estates here, as I mentioned, 4,500 feet to the northwest, so this is an older, larger lot residential subdivision. You know, I'm doing a quick count, this is only the edge of that project, it continues further west along Holly Lynn Drive, but pictured here, I think we've got 13 to 14 homes.
And you mentioned that there's another cell, cell tower on the property?
Yeah, there's another antenna tower, so the difference, it's not for cell phones, it's for antenna work, so in our code, we lump antennas and cell carriers kind of into the same use, either private or commercial, so this is for antenna equipment specific to Suez and again, I will defer to the applicant to explain in greater detail what exactly they're putting on the tower for you, equipment wise, I mean, there are plans and a detailed letter as well.
But that's what the, the other one is, as well, is a, is a radio antenna as well?
Yeah, per the detailed letter, it's another private tower that's on the site.
Okay, any other questions?
What fire district is this in?
Yeah, Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, so this is not in a fire district, so this is regulated by the State of Idaho, and so, understanding how that works, similar to any emergency situation in the county, Ada County Sheriff is kind of the initial call for dispatch and then there is a management plan for emergencies that occur in those areas, so close proximity fire districts would be probably included Whitney and Kuna and then BLM actually owns land out here, so they would be a part of that response team as well. And then yeah, any of the response capability that the State of Idaho has as well would be a part of that process, but there is a emergency management plan for all of Ada County and this particular area is a little different because it isn't within one of those fire districts that we normally deal with, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Not at this time.
Not at this time, thank you. Mr. Ropp, would you like to have a testimony?
Mr. Ropp has some presentations that I'm gonna help open for him, so I guess I just wanna be cognizant of his time based on how quickly I can open his presentations, so.
And if you could state your name for the record, Mr. Ropp.
I'm John Ropp, I live at 7707 West Vallejo Road in Boise.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you put up the, the first one, which would be the zoom in, zoom out?
Uh, yeah, for some reason this just closed, only one second here, sorry.
Just for the record, I'm gonna also participate after he talks.
As part of his presentation?
Yes.
All right, and Jay Ropp, is that the correct one?
Yes, Jay Ropp.
Okay.
Zoom in, zoom out.
Oh, you wanted, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I realized that they might want to see the zoom out picture.
All right, so here's this.
And do the zoom out.
Okay. Can everyone see that okay?
There. Okay, you can see the Birds of Prey there in the blue, right? Okay. Are we starting yet?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. My name is John Ropp and dearest esteemed Commissioners, my appeal is about fire safety of this tower. We live within this area here, I live right where that blue dot is across from the other blue dot, so I'm twice as far from this tower as the Birds of Prey Sanctuary. It is required in this application to have fire protection plan for agriculture and the public. Slide one, oh, what am I got? Slide one, please?
Oh, yes.
Of the fire. There is no plan for access, water, or resources for fire protection as required by this application. First of all, I will show you what happened in 2020, this was two years ago. Behind my house was a grass fire that got out of control, slide two. It was started by a neighbor who was burning brush. It burned a barn and several acres of sagebrush and threatened the neighborhood. So we live there, the Birds of Prey Sanctuary is the next hill over and then you could see from the beginning map that was where the tower is gonna be put. Slide three, our family stood guard with garden hoses and shovels ready for battle. You got slide three? Slide three, slide four. Next, next one, the slides that are under sagebrush. These slides show the terrain from the Birds of Prey Sanctuary to the tower and, and also toward our house, so we're standing in the middle taking it. On your left is the Birds of Prey Sanctuary and you can see all the sagebrush out there. The proposed tower has no access between this, their location or our location to the, the tower, so if you have a fire, there's nothing, no way to get to this because of the hilly terrain, also the vegetation. Between the site and the homes in the Birds of Prey Sanctuary is sagebrush and rangeland. Everyone in this area is on a well, there is no water. Where is this water to fight this danger? Slide six. Oh, two, go to three, four, five. Three shows that they've had a fire there before, thank you, and that this is one of the signs at the Birds of Prey Sanctuary saying, can you tell where it burned before? And that's, the, the top is the Birds of Prey Sanctuary. Four, more sagebrush, you're looking from the west Birds of Prey Sanctuary and you see all of that and that's what you see between that and the tower. Five, this shows Boise from the tower north and you can see the residences down there that are on Holly Lynn, and go to the number six, which shows you Holly Lynn Drive from another angle and there's 37 homes along that road, not 13 as the other map showed, I counted them from Google. Also, there's residences in the other area where we live. So, where is the plan of maintenance and proposed prevention of fire? There's no access roads, there's no water. It is well documented that cell towers do catch on fire. Next one's eight. This shows Birds of Prey Sanctuary again from the east. Nine, there shows where the tower is gonna be put over by that hill and there's some other tower there that I don't know what it is, but between here and there is rangeland where cattle graze and agriculture area and also sagebrush as you can see. So a fire goes, it's gonna go fast and as far as the other side, it doesn't matter that the access road for fire is over by that mound of hill because the tower is to the west of it and could easily burn west and it's not gonna hurt the, the rock, rock yard. Also agriculture is threatened, also agriculture is threatened with no master plan for protection. We have livestock, horses, goats, yamas and beehives, for instance, my son is a beekeeper and has hives at our place, is also within this threatened area because there is no access roads to it. So I urge you to deny this application. Number 10, that shows it again from another angle showing where it is way over there by that hill. Number 11, so I urge you to deny this application because of the safety hazard that's not been addressed. You have full authority to deny this due to the planned location and lack of planned safety for suppliers. Thank you much for your consideration in this matter, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm David DeHaas, 1116 South Vista. One of the big goals of this commission, this body, is to protect the private property rights of the citizens and to keep us safe. So even though, as I mentioned in 853115, this is a private tower, it doesn't give the right for private commercial companies to go out and create a hazard. I talked to the applicant some time ago and this tower is putting out, proposed to put out 11,600 megahertz of power at 17 dBm. What that means, it's an insane amount of power, it's beyond what is, would be needed, in fact, the recent court ruled that any towers over 6,000 megahertz should be turned off because there are no safety studies whatsoever. The other thing is that this applicant has not prove, prove that there is actually a need for this tower. When the Telecommunications Act was adopted in 1996, Congress preserved to local governments what is called the general authority regulate the placement of wireless facilities. Employing that power since 1996, local governments have adopted smart planning provisions which is designed to regulate cell towers, especially ones such as this to avoid adverse impacts against property owners to minimize the number of towers needed to provide wireless service in a given jurisdiction and to make sure that a proposed installation is both necessary and reasonable. The first paragraph of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 is paragraph C 7A, which is entitled general authority. Under general authority, Congress deliberately preserved to you the general authority to regulate the placement of wireless facilities. There are perfectly valid legal grounds for denying an application of the conditional use permit, both under the unified land use ordinance and federal law, however, also provide that if you were to deny this application, any denial has to be based upon substantial evidence. One of the things local governments have been doing across the entire United States is to try to minimize the number of towers you need to provide personal wireless services and to do that, anytime an applicant submits an application, they require the applicant provide probative data, not computer generated propagation maps which have no probative value in order to enable this board to determine if there's a good spot for a wireless facility, you need the data. Most common form of a data is a drive test data. If you get drive test data, which is very simple, they take a device, a recording device attached to a phone, drive through the area and that recording device gives you the actual signal strength throughout the jurisdiction. That data, that actual probative data, shows you the number one, the existence or absent gaps in service, number two, the geographic locations of those gaps. The applicant claims they need this tower, but we have, you have no proof, you have no actual data whatsoever, they've given you no numbers. It would be like me building a building and I've got a nice picture of it, but I'm not giving to you the strength of the steel, I haven't given you how deep the concrete is, I haven't told you about any of the electrical innards of the building whatsoever. They have not proven it, they have a tower now, but they're not really telling you why they need it and why so much power. Maybe they don't know that they have that much, what that means. So anyway, this, this should be denied on, on those grounds, not providing you the data that you need. So it's really easy to provide these maps with physical probative data, but that's not been done in this application, so for that reason, this should be denied. Thank you.
Is there, is there any questions?
Sure.
Hey, Mr. DeHaas, there's some questions for you.
So the gentleman before, he was talking a lot about fire suppression, I probably could have asked him, but do you know these towers to cause fires?
There's, uh, yeah, there's lots of evidence. In the most recent court decision, there was a lot of evidence put about how these towers catch on fire all across the country, they catch on fire, they can fall over, so yeah, it does happen, they're putting out a lot of, a lot of energy, these towers put out a lot of energy, so yeah, they do catch on fire.
So is it primarily from them falling over?
Uh, I can't tell you all the reasons why they do catch on fire, I think there's someone gonna speak to that here in a few minutes in the audience that's gonna speak to that more thoroughly.
Okay, thank you.
But they do, there's a lot of, a lot of energy, especially that much energy, that's, doesn't take much, it's metal.
Thank you.
All right, you, you mentioned the propagation study, that, that this cell tower should have a propagation study?
There should be some reason to, to prove that they need the tower. Just saying I need a tower, if everyone, if I could put up a private tower in my yard, just say I wanna do a tower, what's my reason, I'm putting out a power, this is invisible pollution that this, this tower is emitting. It's very dangerous for humans, for animals, for our pollinators, so there needs to be some kind of a, a regulation and you guys have in your code that you're gonna provide the safety of the citizens.
Yeah, all right. Now, this isn't, is a, is not really a cell tower, is it? Cause they don't, it doesn't hook up with.
Well, it's, it's similar, it's providing data, as I understand it, for their communications.
With the Suez.
With Suez, yes, yeah.
All right, is there any other?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
That would need to be, yeah, power needs to come way down.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We have, is anyone from SUEZ or, okay, go ahead. If you could state your name for the record so we could...
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Elizabeth Kekaritz. I'm an attorney with Givens Persley. I am here on behalf of the applicant, SUEZ. With me today, we also have Robert Barrett, who's the project manager for SUEZ, who'll be able to answer some of your more technical questions. Catherine Cooper, who's the director of engineering at SUEZ. Jesse Shockley, who's a structural engineer with JUB Engineers, who designed the tower itself. Jan Krieler, the outreach manager at SUEZ. And then Lisa Bachman, a land use planner at JUB. They're all here with me today.
Okay.
As you are aware, SUEZ operates the domestic water facilities and treatment plants throughout the Treasure Valley. They are requesting a new tower to help support their internal communications for operations. This will support their SCADA system, which is the Supervisory Control and Data Operations System, which allows SUEZ to monitor, manage, and respond to any emergency from their headquarters so they don't have to be onsite at all times. It really allows their different wells and their different monitoring to talk to each other throughout the Treasure Valley region. What I think is important to point out here is this is an appeal of a conditional use permit for a private radio tower. Much of what has been requested and mentioned already is just simply not included within what the applicant is required to provide for this sort of private tower. This project, to begin with, it is not a 5G cell tower. We do have Robert Barrett here. He'll be able to address that a little bit. But it is, it's, it does use radio transmissions, but when you think about the propagation of small 5G cell towers throughout the cities, throughout the counties, where they're on every other block, on every other corner, that's not what they're proposing here. This is out more in the, it's out in the country, and it's used strictly for these public safety concerns with the water system. The proposed tower is only for their private use. It's not for commercial use. They don't sell space on this. They don't let Verizon or anyone come in and use space on the tower. The project aligns with the current land use. It's been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and meets all the requirements of Ada County Code and the conditions of approval. And it is necessary to, it is necessary to ensure the safe water delivery within the system. We do have slides going through how it complies with each of the conditional use permit requirements, but I think I'd like to jump right into the health, safety, and welfare issue, which I believe is going to be at the fore tonight. Mr. Rob talks about fire safety. At this location, there's actually a large SUEZ water well, and there are hydrants on the property within the fenced perimeter. There is fire safety at this location. Further, as far as fire goes, there's not a significant history of these towers bursting into flames, of there being significant problems with them. And this is a second tower in a location where there's already one tower. The area has already been gravelled. It's been, it's had all of the trees removed. It's, well, there are never any really trees out here to begin with. It's had the trees, it's had the grasses, it's had the shrubs all removed. And so we're really talking about a gravelled fenced-in area with two antennas in there. So adding the second antenna is not going to significantly change anything. It really is just one more antenna on a concrete pad in a gravelled area behind a fence. There's also, as far as other concerns where they go, there are numerous towers in the area, including that large NOAA weather tower, the big bulb one that you saw. And there is the well. The fire protection plan is the same as it is for most places that are in rural Ada County, where you do, you call into the Ada County Sheriff's Office. They are able to then get the BLM, Whitney Fire, CUNA Fire, those sort of entities on the line and get out there to conduct fire suppression activities. Let's go on to the next. As far as the tower location, you can back up one. It is .7 miles to the Birds of Prey, who had no comment on the application, and it's almost one full mile to the nearest residential home. As Robert will talk, or I can talk a little bit about it, these operate in a, this sort of radio antennas, they operate in a line of sight. They don't propagate in the cone shape that like a cell tower necessarily would. This is more like line of sight, line of sight. And where these lines of sight are, it actually, one of them is going straight east off across the gravel area, and one is going more to the north, a little bit to the west. So they're not actually line of sighting over either the Birds of Prey or over this One comment that's been raised by Mr., I believe it was DeHaas, I didn't catch his last name for sure, is the requirement that this be needed, that there be some sort of gap in coverage. Because this isn't a commercial wireless cellphone coverage, it's a different situation. That's not part of the requirements. This is more, these radio antennas are governed under regulations that have to do with safety, with mining operations, with fire services, with things of this sort of nature. A fixed microwave, what are they called? They are called private operational fixed point-to-point microwave services versus a cellphone tower. General standards for the criteria, they have been met. This is a private, not a commercial use. It's accessory to and permitted or approved use. It's, the rest of the property is being used for agriculture purposes. It is in compliance with the regulations of, it's in compliance with the regulations and requirements of the FAA. They've issued a determination of no hazard to air navigation letter. This is not going to be affecting the airspace around the airport. They are going to be required to paint it and, I believe, put a red flashing light on the top of it because of the air issues. ITD, a notice was sent. They did not, the Bureau of Aeronautics did not respond. The Boise Airport, they have to have an navigation easement over the property, and so they have filled that out. I believe they're working with them right now to get that sort of thing signed. This is also within the area of Military Influence Overlay Area. This was submitted to Lieutenant Colonel Christopher Borders at the National Guard, and they had no objection to it. Finally, in the private tower, they talk about a licensed amateur radio operator, and that is not what this is. We are not a private, we are not a radio operator, private amateur radio operator. As far as the tower construction standards, it complies with all the FAA regs. Once they go to begin construction, they do have to submit a notice of construction to the FAA. It exceeds all of the setback requirements. There's setback one foot for every 10 feet of total tower height. There is an engineered site plan has been submitted. The fall zone requirements are also met, which is one foot for every 10 feet of tower. The fall zone is all completely within this property. It's all within that same gravelled concrete pad area. And they will be required to put a light on it, and it will have a galvanized finish. As far as a master site plan, it also complies with everything required there. It complies with the comp plan and the title on this. This property is actually designated industrial on the future land use map, and this would be considered typically a semi-industrial use. It also meets numerous comp plan goals, specifically goals 5.2 and 5.6 that have to do with water safety utilities, working with the county, conserving and protecting the county's groundwater and surface waters. And that's what this is exactly doing. They're using it so that they can have that notification so they can be monitoring these wells, tracking their equipment remotely so that they know immediately at headquarters as soon as something starts to go south. They completed the natural features analysis and addressed, and this looks at the hydrology, soils, topography, vegetation, sensitive plant and wildlife species, historic resources, hazardous areas, and impact on natural features. It is, JUB Engineering does this, and it's not just them saying, oh, I think this, I think that. They pull all the reports, the state, federal reports on what are the soils in this area, what are the Ada County maps on the topography. They really look at all those things. And in this area, it determined that there would not be, there'd be an inconsequential impact to the surrounding area wildlife and existing natural terrain. The landscaping, they are asking that they not be required to landscape this, that they do want to leave it in its natural state, which is surrounding it, just the sage that you saw the pictures of. They also meet the parking requirements. They simply just want to be able to park on the gravel that's already there. They're only going to have one person out there once or twice a week, just doing monitoring, checking the wells, that sort of thing. They comply with all the base standards, the overlay district standards. It's consistent with the Ridge to Rivers Pathway Plan, and they really don't need, their utilities and public services are available, and to the extent that they need them, they're there. This doesn't really significantly affect anything. It's mostly, it's really just a self-supporting radio tower south of town that really doesn't require a lot of extra utilities. As far as the conditional use required findings. It's not detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. As we've discussed, there is adequate fire suppression out here. There are wells on the property. There are hydrants on the property. A truck could get in and turn around. In fact, not only is it not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, it is actually very beneficial to the health, safety, and welfare as this helps ensure that we have a steady supply of clean drinking water in the Treasure Valley area. Also, by having this be able to be done remotely, this sort of monitoring, it does tend to make water more affordable for the residents. There are no undue adverse impacts on the surrounding properties. This is designed to be unobtrusive. There's going to be approximately, like I mentioned, one site, maybe two site visits a week. It's consistent with the comp plan. It complies with the purpose statement of the base zone, which, the purpose of the RP zone in part is to permit the development of schools, churches, and other public and quasi-public uses, complies with all of the local codes, state and local codes and federal, does not impede the normal development of the surrounding property. There is still another 300 acres that could be developed outside of this one little pad, and then those will also be able to be sufficiently buffered from this use. And there really isn't going to be any, there's adequate public and private services to the extent they're required, and the political subdivisions, again, to the extent that they would ever be needed, are able to provide services here. Let's go into the last page. One issue that was raised is why do we need a, why does SUEZ need a second tower here? And the first tower is used currently for SUEZ purposes. They also have co-located other similar critical service infrastructure on it. I believe actually Ada County may have something on there for its radio services. Boise Fire at one point did. I don't know if they do anymore. Intermountain Gas has located some of its similar SCADA monitoring equipment on it as well. So it is used for other similar non-commercial purposes for utilities and local government entities to be able to have this necessary communication. Just in summary, it does comply with all of the development service requirements. It meets all the required conditions of approval. The applicant is absolutely is willing to accept all of the conditions of approval. They don't have any problem with any of those. It complies with the FCC regulations, the FAA regulations, basic district standards, the overlay districts, and the Ada County specific use standards. It is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. There's no real significant impacts on the surrounding area. And all agency and staff comments have been reviewed, and the applicant can and will comply with all of the conditions listed in the staff report. On that, we request that you deny the appeal and uphold the approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
That was perfect tiring. I'll stand for questions.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I couldn't find in the original application the appropriate fire district or whoever would respond. What would be the response timeout here? Do we have that?
Chairman, Madam Commissioner, this is not within a fire district, and I don't have a response time that I could offer up to you at the hearing right now. This is in close proximity to the Whitney and CUNA Fire Districts. And as mentioned before, and I think shared with the original applicant's presentation, there is a coordinated management plan for emergencies in the area, but I don't, I don't have a response time off the top of my...
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
How many people work at that site?
I do not believe anyone works at it full-time. It is really just intermittent monitoring and making sure it's on a route to make sure wells are working properly, checking things out.
Okay. And so, since this is a private tower, not a public tower, I guess, we're able to consider other factors that we might not be able to consider for public towers?
No, I actually believe it's less. We're required to provide less, and you consider less. Much of what was mentioned, it was not like a propagation study, that sort of thing they had to do for the FCC licensing, but that's just not required under the code for a private tower. So you're actually looking at less. It's significantly less.
I just handed Commissioner Davidson, yeah, the list. It's considerably less. I guess that was my initial question, Mr. Chair, is should this be under the commercial application, even though it's private, they're providing commercial, it's for a commercial purpose because of the PUC. So I've kind of struggled with that. It's a little bit of a hybrid for me, in my mind. So I, I'm comfortable after looking at all of the information and how it's laid out in our code that we did steer you to the right application, and it is private, even though it's, as I said, it's for a commercial company.
Do you know what the reach is of your radio signals?
I have Mr. Barrett here, if you don't mind if he answers that.
Okay, sure. We want to get some fire, because it dawns on me that cell towers are, they're called cell towers because they're just a small, small area, and they go from one cell to the next. Is that not correct?
That is, a cell tower is correct, Mr. Chairman.
But yours is not. Yours is just a radio tower that with signals out to your, to your people, correct?
Correct. But what, this one, it's a point-to-point microwave system. So it's more just a pipe between two locations, and it's a very small pipe. So you can't go, you know, 100 feet away from it and you'll pick up what you would for like a cellphone or something like that. There is sensitive equipment that you might be able to see some very, very low signal out there. I mean, extremely low. But the way this system works is that those two dishes from the two different points have to be exactly aligned. If they're not aligned, it doesn't work. So that's what, that's what it is. It's not like a cellphone or your broadcast radio that you can pick up all over the place, just between two points. And actually, to clarify on this tower, it's a relay tower between a point, one of our plants on the east end of town to one of our offices on the northwest.
And that's why it's necessary, because you have a relay, relays it to your office.
Exactly. And there's also part of that, it is a well site, so we can connect into that, what we call these as a backhaul type system. So it moves large amounts of data around town to different locations.
I understand that from a previous testimony, Mr. DeHaas, that there's 11,000 megahertz of electricity being... of electricity being used at that site?
The 11,000, that is the frequency, and the frequencies are any from like, I think it's like 10.5 gigahertz to 11. It's radio frequency, it's the wave pattern is what he's talking about. The radios themselves are fairly low wattage, I don't have the exact number of the radio itself, but our license for, the FCC license allows us to do, I think it's anywhere from, say, about a little bit over 200 watts to 300 watts, going out 60 feet up in the air, and it's a small signal going to the other, other side.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No, this one.
You got the technical guy here, we can ask him any questions if you want.
I'll probably be back again if you think of anything else.
Okay. Could you remind me what your, what your job was?
I'm the project manager on this, but I've worked for Suez Boise Water for 37-plus years. Before that, I worked for a cable company, working on satellites and communication systems. Also did the SCADA control systems for 30-plus years here, so it was all telemetry, radio, phone.
All right.
So could you just kind of restate, so what is the, the actual output of what you're proposing?
There's many ways that you can read these on different licenses, the FCC license, but when you kind of convert it into like a wattage type thing, the output of the antenna that our license is in is within, say, about 200 to 300 watts. Now, that doesn't mean that we'll be at that. There was some discussion earlier about, are we making sure that we do the minimum? And we will do the minimum, the propagation study that was done through the radio provider, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of around 200 watts that we would need to. And that's just at the one site. At the, at the other site, it's barely, you know, the wattage is very, very low. So, and then one thing that I kind of explained to some people too, they always, you know, what does that mean, or something like that, especially with the, do you want to just keep turning up the power? Somebody said, well, it doesn't work right, or somebody got interference, turn the power. My analogy to that is that like you're talking to somebody, and if you keep turning up the power, you're just raising your voice, and you're just screaming at somebody. All of a sudden, you just can't understand what they're saying, because they're screaming at you. So you do want to have it to the bare minimum to get that signal across to the other side, and that's where we, we go. And all our radios are within the, our FCC licenses.
So the previous testimony, they said something about 6,000 megahertz.
Well, I think he said something about 6,000. I think there was some discussion that there was a court, court decision, or there was some court discussion at some point that they didn't want anything above 600 gigahertz, and that's the frequency of the radio, the radio frequencies. So, you know, like our FM radios are, you know, 97 point something megahertz frequency. This is way up there in the gigahertz radios.
So.
Fucking that.
But if the FCC is regulating the output, does that mean that if it was raised significantly past what they would limit it to, there would be potential danger?
Well, yeah. I'm not sure if there'd be potential danger, it would cause interference on other people's radios, possibly. But what, again, going back to the point, that if it is, if you start using too much, turning up the application on that, the other side doesn't understand what you're saying. It just doesn't, it just doesn't work. And, and these are fixed locations, and they're about anywhere from probably, this one's, I think it's about six miles apart, so, you know, it's not going to help turning up the power if the power ever would go up. So, yeah, so they would be used at the minimum power that we needed to get across to the other side.
So how is, how is this different from a cellphone tower? Could you talk about that?
Yeah, the cellphone, if you think of cellphone, that right now I could bring my cellphone in and, and pick it up in here most likely. These are, even though the tower would be outside someplace, let's say it's just right outside this building, and it's going to another tower, you would not be able to pick it up in here with, just generally. You know, you, you could get test equipment, and you could, if they're sensitive enough, you could probably say there's something in, in here, but not, you wouldn't ever be at any really detectable levels.
So you said it's, it's more of a line of sight?
Correct.
So with the birds of prey right there, and I don't know if you have this information, but if a bird through, flew through that line of sight, right through the transmission, would that affect them? Do you know?
The, I couldn't give you the, an exact answer of what it is, but the, you know, the farther you get away from those dishes, you know, the less that, you know, the less that beam is, is there. So it's not like, you know, like a microwave or something that somebody's going to fly into it, and all of a sudden you have a cooked bird or something like that.
But it might affect them.
I don't, I don't really think so. We, we have birds out there all the time, sit on equipment, and we don't see any dead birds sitting out there. The biggest probably problem for birds out there is there's power lines out there. They got actually the bird's roosts on them and stuff, so. Yeah, so we, we don't see any dead birds out there.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I'll be back if you need some.
Oh, I did have another question. You brought, you brought up, you did a propagation study?
Yeah. One of the first things we have to do, you know, try to get this accomplished, is that we have to make sure that those paths are available to us. So again, it's some type of radios, you, you could put an antenna structure somewhere, and it really doesn't matter, because you can get the, that propagation of that frequency out to different locations. We have to make sure that that line of sight is available, because maybe some other company has that, that path. There's actually invisible path in between those two dishes, and if we were at the same level or same height, that it would cause interference. And usually with the propagation studies, it's within a certain, well, area too. So you don't get any problems with someone crossing stuff. So, so that was the very first thing we did, to make sure that those paths were available, and then we applied for the FCC licenses.
And that's the purpose of your propagation study, to make sure your two points are.
They, and then also for your license, then we have to tell the FCC, or the integrator who did the licensing for us, this is the wattage that the study came up with. So again, it's not an arbitrary number that we come up with to say, okay, we're going to do this wattage. It's, they give us a study, and says between these two points, this is what the power level you need, and they're usually pretty conservative. And then when we put it in, we make sure that we'll, we'll be probably likely below that.
All right. Before you leave, could you give your full name for the record?
Yes, it's Robert Barrett, and I'm with Suez Water Idaho.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And you're concluded?
I am concluded, unless you have more questions for it. I was just told there are five of these towers throughout Treasure Valley, and they've never had problems with, like, dead birds at the base of them or anything.
Yeah, we have a, we have a map here of all five of them.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is one of the engineers here to testify?
About the construction?
Kathy Cooper?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's Kathy Cooper, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, if you'd like her to. She wasn't planning on, do you have questions?
Yeah, just to, yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right now or during like three minutes?
Right now or during her three?
Oh, no, during, I didn't know you signed up yet. During your three minutes is fine.
Yeah, you do it during, during your three, when you're called up. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Now, we will open it up for discussion. I have a number of people that are, that are already signed up. I've already heard from Mr. Ropp, so we'll take, the next person is Robert Barrett.
I'm sorry, I spoke, okay, I'm sorry. I can come back if you have any further.
If we have any further questions, we'll, we'll ask you. Okay, then we have, on WebEx, we have Hank Allen.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Fine, go ahead, Mr. Allen. You have, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
So actually, I'm signed up, I'm going to testify on this, the Star cell tower. I think you have me on the wrong one.
Oh, well, yeah, you're down here, you're down here for this one, so we'll do, we'll wait to the Star one. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we have Jesse Shockley. I don't know.
So?
Could you state your name for the record?
My name is Jesse Shockley. My address is 2760 West Excursion Lane, Meridian. I am the structural engineer on record for this project. I did the foundation design and the site plan. And I will stand for questions.
Okay, any questions?
I guess if you could address the appellant's concerns that these catch on fire, they're not structurally sound, or I'm not sure, there wasn't really any hard evidence submitted to, to that effect, but there was testimony given.
The tower itself is designed by a tower manufacturer, and they, the manufacturer has licensed engineers in the state of Idaho, so they actually do the design of the tower itself. I did the design of the foundation, and so the foundation is designed for gravity loads and wind and seismic loads, so it cannot overturn from that kind of loading. So that's, that's what I looked at for design per the International Building Code.
It'll withstand what types of winds?
The building code requires that we design for 105 miles per hour.
Have we ever seen 105 miles per hour here?
No.
If not, okay, thank you.
Do you work for, for Suez, or do you work for an engineering company, or who do you work for?
I work for J U B Engineers.
Oh, J U B. Are you familiar with any corresponding cell, radio tower that has had any structural problems with wind or otherwise?
I have not.
Anywhere in the, in your, in Idaho, but anywhere else in the whole?
I have not.
Okay. Any other questions?
So when this tower is transmitting, will it heat up? Does it, does it get to a hot temperature or not?
My understanding is it, it will not.
Okay. Any other questions while you're here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one we have on the list is Elizabeth Cockraths.
That was the answer.
Okay. And we have Catherine Cooper.
Hi, I'm Kathy Cooper. I'm the Director of Engineering for Suez here in Idaho.
Okay.
I'm in favor of denying, or denying the appeal and approving our conditional use permit for the tower. I think I'd like to address the fire safety. We not only provide potable drinking water and irrigation water, we provide fire protection water for our entire service area, which is a large portion of Ada County. We have hydrants along the 10-mile ridge, including in the Birds of Prey Center, and right at this 10-mile well site where the tower would go.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
I got buzzed. So, so for fire safety, having the SCADA controls and having our pipeline and wells and hydrants up there is, is a big plus for fire safety. There is a big turnaround area right in front of that wellhouse that our crews use, and the farmer uses, and so a wildland fire truck can turn around right there as well.
And you have a big well there?
Yes. That's the, it's a wellsite.
Okay. Do you have a hydrant that a fire truck can hook up to?
Yes, there's a hydrant right outside the wellsite.
Oh, I'd say.
It's pretty good. And the wells along that ridge hooked to that pipeline produce over 4,000 gallons per minute, so there would be a lot of fire flow up there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Kathy, if you wouldn't mind, just, under FCC and under NEPA, Section 332 C7 of the Communications Act, local, state and local authorities need to identify when there could be impact into, and I'll just quote it, located in a wildlife preserve or an affected, threatened, and endangered species area habitat.
Okay.
So knowing this is next to the Birds of Prey habitat, I'm a little concerned that they didn't respond, number one. So I just wanted to know if you've reached out to them, if you guys have talked to them, if there's any issues or concerns from your end or their end?
I have not talked to them personally. Rob may have. We have a wellsite right in the middle of the Birds of Prey Center there. It's called a raptor wellsite. And so we work with them regularly. We have pipelines through their facility and the well there. They gave us an easement for a new water storage tank on their property further west. So I don't, I don't think.
Are they aware of this, do you think, this application?
No, I mean, we already have a tower there, so I don't.
Okay.
I don't think anyone's spoken specifically to them about this, other than the notification they got, unless Rob has.
Okay. I would just ask that you try to reach out and, and see if there's anything that they would want you to accommodate in terms of what they normally put on these, so they don't nest on them, because I think that's been a problem in the past, is when they nest on them. But there's apparatus that I think you can put on them, so they don't. But that is an area, because I, I don't want to have to order an environmental assessment. If you guys can just make sure that you've communicated and there's no issues or concerns from their end.
Sure. And that, that Birds of Prey Center there, I mean, most of those birds there are living in inside.
Inside.
Buildings and enclosures. They're not out flying around.
Chairman Commissioners, just to weigh in on that, during my presentation, the conservation area itself is about six miles southwest of this site. The Birds of Prey Center is the, so it's not, the center's not actually in the conservation area.
Okay, so the conservation is six miles?
It's about six miles southwest, kind of along the Snake River area.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our list, we have Vivian Lockery.
Yes, Commissioners, Vivian Lockery. I've been a resident of Ada County for 28 years. I really want to thank Diana Sanders for her direction and support in, in guiding us through this, answered a lot of our questions. I, first, I don't see that there's been a serious evaluation of alternative sites. It's the applicant that, that has the sole burden of proving such, and this is for the Federal Telecommunications Act. So in the J U B letter, detailed letter in the project information page two, "The purpose of the tower is to support internal communications for Suez water technicians as they provide service and operations throughout Ada County." And I just wonder, is, after this discussion about, about its communicating, providing communications between one plant in the east end of town to another in the northwest part of town, is this truly the only site that can provide that? Wouldn't there be other towers? Because I've heard that their other tower does not have the capacity due to, it's already at capacity for co-location of other antennas unrelated to Suez. Are there not other, other towers that Suez can utilize for co-location? Co-location is always preferable to building a new tower. So I understand that, that there's a lot of remote monitoring and, and needs that need to be filled, but is this actually the location and the, and the only appropriate location for this tower, for this purpose? And, and I guess I just don't understand the reasoning, that there can't be co-location or, or other locations considered. So we've heard that this tower is within 100 feet of the internationally acclaimed World Center Birds of Prey headquarters for the Peregrine Fund. And you probably know that the Peregrine, Peregrine Fund is, is known for its worldwide conservation and recovery efforts of rare and endangered raptors. So, and so this facility, we know, houses raptors in decline, and their important work is brought back endangered species from the brink of extinction. Many of us are aware of that, you probably are too. So although conditional use permits can't be denied for health and environmental reasons, do you really want to risk the negative impacts this tower could have on endangered species? You know, you have full authority to deny a conditional use permit based on location, not on health or environment, but you can on location. And this authority has never been taken away from you by the Telecommunications Act, the FCC, or anyone else. David DeHaas spoke about the 1996 Telecommunications Act specifically giving local authority on, on two towns and counties to deny conditional use permits based on location or aesthetics. So, thank you. Thank you for your time and your service.
Stand for questions, please.
Do you have, we, anybody, anybody?
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
So that was my question, was where the conservation area is in relationship to the actual Birds of Prey, to where this proposed tower site is. And it's six miles away. And so. And so, what's your, what's your concern about having this Santana Tower there with the Birds of Prey that are in confinement?
So, the center itself is less than 36 miles away. It's the, the conservation area that you're speaking of is, yes, is farther away. I, you know, there's, there's a plethora of peer-reviewed studies on the effects on birds and pollinators of environment, of radio frequency emissions. And, you know, I don't have those available for you, but I've provided them to the Idaho Conservation League and, and other organizations concerned with, with birds and other environmental concerns.
So, do you have any documentation that you can give this board?
Not at this time. I could get on my computer when I get home and send it to you, sure. I'm sorry, but I didn't, I didn't think that that would be something you'd want, so, but I'd be glad to provide it.
Thank you.
Shall I send it to?
Any other questions before she goes?
Diana Sanders? Send it to Diana.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the list is Kevin Kless. Hello, Kevin, could you give your name again for the record?
Yes, my name is Kevin Kless. I live at 1634 Martha Street, Boise, Idaho.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank the Honorable Board here for allowing me to testify. I'm a former captain of the United States Air Force, and I served as an Air Force physicist for the Program Executive Office for Intelligence and Electronic Warfare Sensors Directorate. I was also with the National Air and Space Intelligence Center, and I also served as Chief of Operational Test and Evaluation at Edwards Air Force Base, and I evaluated a variety of telecommunications systems, electronic warfare systems, and also surveillance sensors. I have done propagation studies, and I have had great difficulty trying to find a thorough propagation study for this particular tower, and it deeply gives me a lot of consternation. Frankly, I would have probably been skinned alive if I had to test something like this out in actually a missile site at White Sands. So, I'm quite concerned. Measurements, especially a detailed propagation study, requires actual measurements in the field. It cannot just require, just do simple computer calculations as trying to determine where power and range is and what type of power is affected. The gentleman before talked about watts, usually an industry standard, decibels are used. So, this particular tower is not only operating at 11,000 megahertz, but is acting at a power of 17 decibels, that's positive 17 decibels. This phone here is operating at about, at negative 70 decibels. So, this tower is 22,387 times more powerful than this phone that I'm holding in my hand. Also, I just found out tonight, that is a line of sight. We use those many times for telecommunications, for secure communications and so forth. That is actually even more dangerous. If you get one of those antennas out of alignment, that can cause potential danger and also could be a fire hazard. I have absolutely, well, I have absolute confidence that such hastily rushed implementations of these types of technology will be a great regret in the future. Tonight, we have the opportunity to halt at least this one. And so, I please ask you that you grant the appeal for Mr. Rob.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So, you said if the tower was out of alignment, that could cause danger. Could you elaborate on that?
Yes, so this is, so this is, seems to be, I mean, then this goes back, I mean, something like this, this has to be, you have to have data like this provided to the public, so residents especially can be aware of what type of frequencies and waveforms. This is an emergence technology. We don't know the effects. I know some of the effects of what they can be used in certain applications in warfare. So, this is where also I'm concerned. Also, the security implications. Is this network connected? And who can potentially take over the network? Is there safety guards for that? Is another concern. I'm quite frankly terrified that such a private application can get away with so much, especially if it's with a commercial company. I mean, because right now, I'm just thinking, any Joe Schmo, if they have enough money, can build whatever monstrosity on the apartment, emit whatever at various residents or land. So, this is, this is alarming, that it's gotten this far without oversight. And so, yes, I have used systems like that before, line of sight before, and misalignment. It's, if it's hit at the wrong place, you have things like Havana Syndrome, you have all sorts of problems, especially if you have high power and heat. If you hold on to this and you have this in your pocket for a long time, you'd feel the heat yourself all day. So, imagine that at 22,387 times, more than that. So, this is, this is a potentially dangerous technology. Unfortunately, the legislation has not caught up, and so we have to wait. This is why the Court of Appeals in DC has put a halt on this in August. And this is going back to the 6,000 megahertz, because anything above, they don't know yet. We know from private service, but it hasn't been revealed yet, so we have to be very careful with this. And so, this caused a lot of panic, and rightfully so. But I hope clear heads prevail, and I thank you for handling these difficult decisions.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have Ann Hook.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine, Ann. Say your name again for the record.
My name is Dr. Ann Hike. I'm at 1003 North Orchard Street in Boise. I've had 30 years' experience as an emergency room doctor, 30 years' experience as a family practice doctor. My concerns about this, the needs study is, I think, critical. Why do we need another tower without a needs study? And my question is, I think a lot of this could be very, could be easily discovered by looking at dropped calls or drop information that's, that is missing from Suez. Has Suez given us that data? And again, that's another way to do a needs test, or another bit of data for us. Out in the country, this is going to be next to a bird rehabilitation center and endangered species center. There have been reports of birds, when cell towers get turned on, nesting behavior being altered, including things like not taking care of the babies in the nest, or abandoning the nest altogether. So, what is the effect of two towers together? I suspect it's not inconsequential, but it's going to need some type of businesses to look at that, and it's not just additive, but what is the effect of two towers? And I also feel that we need to know what the lowest power is, and this should be part of the proposal. It shouldn't be something that we're talking about. It needs to be in the proposal of the lowest effective radiative power that can get the job done if this tower is in the proper site. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have a question for staff.
Okay.
So, we do keep bringing up the propagation studies, so remind me, if on the private tower, that, was that a part of the requirement?
Madam Chair, Mr. No, we do not require a propagation study for a private tower.
That would be for the?
That's for the commercial tower, which is intended for multiple private cellphone carriers like ATT, Verizon, things like that.
Now, is that something that the Commission could eventually amend in the code?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, certainly, if you at some point wanted us to start requiring a propagation study for these private towers, I mean, that sounds like they're already happening, pardon me, that could be something, we'd have to amend our code, there'd be a full process involved with that, but that is, if that's at the discretion of the Board.
Again, to the staff, they indicated that they did do a propagation study, but it sounded to me like it was a different kind of a propagation study than for a cell tower.
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, I will not pretend to be an expert on propagation studies, but it does sound different than what we normally require for the, for the commercial towers. And I guess I would also say, I got buzzed.
You got buzzed.
That's a very.
There is a, there is a large scope of what fits into the private tower. So, some low-level tower may not be, you know, a propagation study might not even be a requirement based on FCC, whereas a more robust one, like what we're hearing about tonight, may require that. So, I, all that to say is, staff would certainly want to research this before we start requiring propagation studies for private towers, so.
Okay, any other questions before we move on? All right. We have Mr. David DeHaas. You've already spoken. Do you want to speak again?
Yes. So, a couple of things. You mentioned, are there, you know, are there fires across the country? Well, I just did a simple Google on my computer. I'll pull up, there's thousands of pictures of these things catching on fire. You asked about data harming the birds and the bees. I've done five radio shows with experts across the country, and quite frankly, it depresses the heck out of me. As Dr. Martin Paul, who's an expert in this area, says, "David, we're, we're headed towards extinction if we continue to allow this many towers." Look, I know it's hard for you to understand, it's an invisible pollution. You can't see it, you can't touch it. Like I've told somebody, it's harder to explain it than it is to sell somebody a life insurance policy. It's that nebulous, right? So, there's just some of the pictures that you can Google, these do catch on fire. One of the ways that could be changed out there is actually take that dirt road and put some rock in there so a fire truck could get in there. That would improve the fire protection capabilities there. But look, we're in doubt. They said they have a propagation study. You haven't seen it, I haven't seen it. If you're in doubt, you should vote it out. Your basic code says we need to keep private property owners and individuals safe. And right now, based upon testimony of the physicist, you can't do that. The FCC says all RF frequencies should be at the minimal amount of power possible. The minimal amount of power possible. And already, the DC Courts of Appeals have ruled that, hey, we know that you're not safe up to 6,000 megahertz, and you shouldn't go in, over that whatsoever. So, like the physicist mentioned, we don't know what's going to happen there. Well, we do know, but we shouldn't allow that amount of power. But here's the solution to all of this. Look, they want to do this because it's cheap. It's cheap to send the signals via these towers. Let's do what's smart. Let's do what's safe. Let's put fiber optics in the ground. I know the county's already talked about putting a band around the county of fiber optics. That's safe and it's super fast. That would solve all of this. But I think this needs to be remanded back, maybe come back again with actually data, propagation studies, so they can show the citizens that it is safe. But I'm saying, let's go fiber optics. Let's do the right thing. As we mentioned, the fire problem and the public, the public safety. And like Dr. Martin Paul says, look at David, I'm driving across the eastern Oregon, eastern Washington last year, and there was no bugs on my windshield. There's so many towers out there right now that we don't have bugs on windshield, we don't have our pollinators. And I've got videos of birds flying into towers and all of them dying. I mean, this does happen. It's factual. Let's do fiber optics. Suez, big company, now an international company, they can afford it. Thank you.
Well, I want to tell you, I just drove across southern Idaho, and I had a whole bunch of bugs on my windshield coming across, coming across in that area.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So, we really can't admit into evidence your laptop showing, you know, Google and a bunch of images. Do you have any empirical data to submit here tonight?
I'll dig through this. I don't know if I have the right volume with me, but I can dig through this.
No, we're going to close the public hearing tonight, so you didn't bring it with you. Okay, we submitted evidence, your laptop. Give him your laptop.
God, it's going to take me some time to go through this, ma'am. I'm sorry, I don't, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have, on WebEx, Betty Ash.
I did not have Betty Ash on the DUC.
You have to speak up for the record.
He told, he told us he was, he was on for the star one.
Yeah, he changed his mind.
Okay. Okay, well, let's finish the others up on here, then we can go have Mr. Allen talk. Betty Ash is not on, she doesn't want to speak? Okay. And the next one we have is Lisa Bachman. Do we have Lisa here?
Yeah, Chairman, regarding Betty Ash, she did send in a presentation in an effort to share it, and I think she's, funny enough, I think, having caller trouble. I don't know if you'd want someone else to present her presentation, but she did, she did send in something and spoke to staff earlier today.
Okay, well, if we can, if we can get her information into the record, we'll, we'll try and do that. Okay, you are Lisa? Okay, could you give your name for the, for the record? And, go ahead.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners, Lisa Bachman with J U B Engineers, 2760 West Excursion Lane. I'd like to give my time to Robert to respond to some of the additional concerns that were given tonight, because we won't be given the opportunity for rebuttal, if that's okay?
It's fine with me.
Well, there will be.
Some of the technical questions.
Well, there will be a rebuttal after, no, the other, the other side. Yeah, you're right. All right, if you want to give your, that's fine, if you want us to come respond to it, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bach, Commissioner Ryan, and Ken. I just wanted to respond to some of the questions, I guess, came about the, the alternative sites and the co-mounting on the other ones. This site was picked, we already have some facilities out there, so we don't, it is a good site. It's, it's high in altitude up there. We do have, so we can't put them a lot of places, especially this type of tower. Again, it's got to be a line of sight, it's got to align fairly well. It's on one of our properties. Over the years, we have asked to go on other towers, like the county has some towers around there. They don't usually allow people on, on their towers. We've asked other cellphone. I think it is part of the regulations that they have to have two or three other spots for other cell service, so they don't allow us to be on there with our, with our equipment. We've tried in the past, but that doesn't work. The out of alignment, how those work, the, the signals between those line of sites, again, I, I kind of explained that they have to line up perfectly for them to work. If they do start wandering, we will get alarm. They will, they do have technology in there. If they are so far out of alignment that they aren't communicating back and forth, they will disable themselves. So, we have that. Propagation study, we do, other propagation studies for like our automated meter reading systems, and how that kind of works is kind of like, that's kind of like a cell itself that, they, they do have computer models that they can say, okay, if you have an antenna at this height over in this area, that they know from the terrain what meters it'll read. And that's kind of how we will set up some of our towers at different locations. And it'd be similar to what the cell service would be, and that's how they could see if they have a dead spot or something like that. This is a little different, again, because it's two line of sites. So, what they're looking in the propagation studies, is there any obstructions in between those lines of sight? And there's other concern, or other factors that are in there that, they've got to be so much above the bottom of those, you know, any obstructions to get a full signal and to get a complete signal. So, we do propagation studies, but it's more at the radio manufacturer level to say, yes, our system will work, and that's kind of what we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Would you be able to provide something in writing that states what the minimal amount of power you need to transmit in order to accomplish what you need to accomplish?
We have the, the, the data from, say, the study data from the radio manufacturer, and I, and I would think they're probably a little conservative, so they're probably being a little higher than what you would need. We would, we would be able to give something, you know, at the end that, what we have, but we would be below anything that FCC requires us or allows us to be.
But you'd be able to, to give us something in writing?
Yeah. On some of our other systems, we, we do, we'll go out and we'll, at some of our other well sites, we'll see what the reading is, and we, we mark that down so we know what it is. Because what happens eventually, sometimes you might have a radio that's starting to wander or fade, and it's just, you know, you're getting bad communication, so we kind of see. So, there's something that we could provide eventually, but at least right now, we could give you what the radio manufacturer says, what they would require, or what they're saying they're going to get.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um... Hank Allen wants to speak on this application.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you just fine, Hank.
All right, perfect. Thank, thank you so much for letting me chime in here. As I'm listening, this is completely different than a normal commercial cell tower, like the, the STAR cell tower that we're going to talk about next. And this is a point-to-point relay antenna, which in my opinion is, is a lot better, a lot safer, and a propagation study doesn't really apply when we're talking about a repeater, because it's not like a, you're not just showering out cellphone RF radiation everywhere. This is going from a point-to-point. So more of my concern to, to one of the, the project managers there would be, are you far enough above, are these towers high enough so you're over all the houses? Because it's going to be a, a high, I guess it's a high-powered beam of energy that's going to be going between these two towers. So in both directions where this, this beam of energy is going, are you substantially above residences and houses? And then if that beam of energy goes past the receiving antenna, what's the backstop look like? Are there houses behind it? Or what, what causes that beam of energy to stop right there when it hits the next, the next antenna? Or does it continue infinitely and hit houses down, down, down the stream? And if, and if that's done with the lower amount of energy, and we're able to, to know exactly where that energy is going, it, it makes it a lot safer, in my opinion. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If we wouldn't mind, I'd like to see if they can answer those questions. I think those are two valid questions. SUEZ.
Okay, go ahead.
Please. One would be the height, and the other one is the backstop.
Okay, in the propagation study that we, we'd done, it has the, a height on the tower where it has to be, so the two have to be a certain height. I said there was other conditions that require those being up at a certain height for, so those are, you know, it's a line of sight, so there can't be any obstructions in there, so it can't be going through houses or trees or anything like that. So it's well above any of that. The.
So are you saying it's at about 80 feet, about?
The tower is at 80 feet. I think these are like it, the dishes are at like 67 is what we have, what we put in. That's what the study showed. It was like 67 feet. So if we need to go higher, we have, we have that capability to go higher, but we would reapply. At the far end of these dishes, the, the wattage or the, the signal is, is like minus 57, and it's hard to, you know, what is minus 57 dB or something like that, but it's nothing like what it is at the, at the input or the output of the, the one transmitting on there, which is still, you know, fairly low. It's low, but at the other end, it's, it's not. It dissipates quickly. This signal at this frequency is susceptible to a lot of fog and rain, so there are some things that would do that, so that's how easy it's dissipated.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I have some people that have signed up. Is there anybody else that I didn't call on would like to speak? I have some other people that might want to speak on this particular application. Anyone in the room that wants to speak on this application? I have a, see, some of you signed up twice. You signed up online and then signed up in the back, and so I've got all the ones that signed up online, but there's.
I have one more who'd like to just.
Okay. Who is it?
Barbara Parsley.
Barbara Parsley.
I didn't have her.
Yeah, that's me.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Okay, Barbara, you're welcome to, you're welcome to speak. You've got three minutes. Give your name again for the record, so we have, have it down.
It's Barbara Parsley, P-A-R-S-H-L-E-Y.
Okay.
And I work as, I work as an entomologist at an orch, at the orchards out further west. So I am real familiar and very involved with insects. One of the things that my research shows is that 5G wavelength is short enough that it really does damage the insects. It increases their body temperature and microbes cook them as if you've stuck them in a microwave. Their, the pulses damage the wings and the antenna. It decreases their colony strength when it comes to bees, the honeybees. Honeybees are vital, and yet we're killing them. I wish I, I could lay my hands real quickly, although I can't show them to you. I have a picture of somebody with, who has a honey hive, a honeybee hive, and when the 5G tower turned on near his home, all of the bees were dead. All of them were killed. If they're not killed, it decreases their colony strength. It decreases their fertilization rate. These are significant things. We know we're getting low on bees in this United States, and, you know, here we are going to add additional problems to it. It affects, it causes swarming of those insects. It reduces the hatching of honeybee queens. It, it causes it to be difficult for the honeybees to return to their hives, and they end up with a massive loss of honeybee workers. The end of the experiment on the bees exposed to these EMFs, they had no honey or pollen in their hives in the end of the experiment. This is a very serious issue, obviously. You realize that if you kill off the honeybees, you kill off the food. The 5G has been studied purposely to kill insects that we don't want, such as, you know, tobacco worms and stuff like that, but obviously, they can't use it because it's going to kill off the beneficial insects too. But we're dealing with a food chain issue here. We kill off these honeybee, they're, I mean, we, we're going to kill off our ability to create food. And once you also kill off the honeybees, you've affected the plant life. You affect the sexual reproduction of plants. You affect diversity and composition of plant communities. We, and, and when you think about plants, what they found in Colorado is that trees, it damages the trees itself. They have, the aspen trees in Colorado, the tall trees that are in line with the, the microwave towers have lesions on them from, from the microwaves itself. The smaller trees do not have them because they're not tall enough. But as soon as they get taller, then they.
Could you, could you wrap, could you wrap it up?
I'm finished.
Okay.
I'm sit.
All right.
So, thank you.
Are there any questions?
For any questions on this?
What was your name again?
Barbara Parsley.
Barbara. Doing, is there, are there any questions for Barbara?
Well, just that Barbara, it sounds like your, your research has been on 5G cell towers, and this is not that, so I'm just wondering if you can relate any of your research to this line of sight antenna.
Uh, no, I, I can't, I don't know how your, I will admit, I do not know how your line of sight tower is, it affects these things.
Thank you.
So I have to say, I do not know that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
We can keep your comments in mind for the next hearing right after this, which does involve 5G.
I meant, I meant to say that, that please keep my comments also for the STAR part.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, are there others that wish to, to testify?
We managed to get Betty Ash online.
Oh, okay.
Hey, can we clarify if she wants to testify on this one or the STAR?
Betty, Betty Ash is for this one.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Betty, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine, Betty. Could you give your name?
All righty.
Could you give your name for the record for us?
My name is Betty Ash.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, I don't know if y'all have the PowerPoint up, but.
We do.
They.
Three questions.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and skip that first one with the three minutes, and we're going to come back to that question number three. But if you can click through the PowerPoint, you all will notice this different incidents that involve cell towers and fires and damage to structures. I would like to go all the way to number nine, or, excuse me, number 10. And I am retired from the US Force Service, 38 years of fire suppression and prevention, and I just have a couple of, of thoughts to ask. I'm going to talk about values at risk, which are the structures, rangelands, grazing lands, the infrastructure, that's every house, shed, watershed, plants, animals. So my first question, who, who has jurisdiction for the fire suppression, prevention, and fuel mitigation in the area that this tower is going up? And then is there a fire plan developed and/or approved by the agency or department responsible for fire suppression in the area of that tower? And if so, is it signed and dated and approved by them? And then is that agency or department trained in the direct suppression of that cell tower? If, or fire starts with that cell tower or impedes onto that cell tower, or the lands adjacent to that cell tower? I'm wondering if there was an environmental impact report done which addresses all the positive and negative impacts of that tower going into that area. It's with the wildlife, the vegetation, any and everything to do with that area, including cultural resources? And then with question number three, which was on slide number one, who has ultimate liability, responsibility for those values at risk that are consumed by a fire in which it has been proven that the ignition point started at that tower? Is it the landowner? Is it the person that, or the agency that provides the power? Is it the cell company, antenna company, or is it we, the taxpayers of Ada County? Anything can start an ignition, an electrical surge, wind event, bird strike, yes, pelicans have started fires before, equipment failure, and it's not about if a fire starts, it's when, and are they adequately.
Okay, ma'am, could, could you wrap it up, ma'am?
Last one, Malibu Fire, 2007, 14 to 22 structures lost, power pole failure, electrical and cellular, 2020 Silverado Fire, over 6,000 acres burned, 33 structures lost, liability, power company, and the cell tower. Just want to make sure that these things are addressed as you guys go forward with their permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Betty, and your, your whole presentation will be in the record.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right. Are there others that wish to testify on this tower, on the SUEZ tower? Hearing none? Okay, is Mr. Rob here? Would you like to close you out? You get five minutes to do any rebuttal if you'd like.
I guess I'm going to sum up David DeHaas. You're not going to say anything right, John, or?
Yeah, no, no.
Oh, okay, all right.
All right, go ahead, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
All right, so as you've listened tonight to the evidence, I think there's a lot of doubt. Look, we're not going to not get water tomorrow if this tower goes up or does not go up. That's not going to happen, right? This is to make it less expensive cost for them to monitor their facilities. I get that, I understand it, but there's a safer way to do it, and that's simply fiber optics. There's too much doubt in the safety of this, as we've, we've heard tonight from several experts, including the physicist. With that much doubt, especially with what the county code gives you, the ability to protect us, our private rights and our, and our bodies and autonomy, this needs to be denied. You never saw a propagation study, you didn't have that data before you. I don't know how you can make the decision on that. So I would say let's look to doing something safer. This company could look to doing something safer, they're a pretty big company, they're international, and put fiber optics in the ground. It's safe and it's fast. With that, I'll rest.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman and Commissioners, just to note, exhibits that have been included or will be included in the record will be 17A through 24A, including a, some documents from Mr. DeHaas, who just concluded, so just wanted to let you know, those will be.
I still have time in, in my five minutes to say a couple of things.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, you got a few minutes.
Yeah, one of the things that I noticed, that there was no plan of these water, and no access roads in the plan. They didn't give us a plan. How are they going to protect us? They say they've got the wells, but where is it in the plan? This is part of their, their revelation in their application. When you apply for something and you need this information in it, and it's not in there, then your application is not complete. You can't say this without it documented in your application. That's, that's one thing I'd like to say. The other thing is, did they, is the, there's, at our house, and you know where my house is now from the map, it's on the other side of Birds of Prey. I see Birds of Prey sanctuary from my house. And we have fiber optics in my house. It's called Century Link. My phone and all my telecommunications work off this cell tower, but it's in the ground. It's, it's fiber optics. And they came out and made sure all those whistle pigs didn't chew it up, and made sure the line was steady before, and we had it put in three years ago, and it's still working fine. We get all those scam phone calls on our phone all the time. We have a landline. And so I know they've got it close, so it's not going to take them much to have it put in. So I think that would be a good way to end all the problems with this.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I might just note, note that Century Link has, they do have fiber optics, but I really doubt they have fiber optics going to your house. They probably have a phone line going to your house.
Well, it goes into ground, yes.
Yeah.
But the fiber optics is at the corner, and then it runs with the phone line under it, which they could run under the ground over there. I mean, you have the, it's available in our whole neighborhood. And so if it's available in our neighborhood, how come it isn't next door, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like for SUEZ to come back up and address the broadband that was, that was raised. If it's already out there and there's fiber in the ground, wouldn't that be a better way to go, and if not, why not?
Elizabeth Kekretz, one of the reasons is we can't have the fire between the different towers. Because this is the relay tower, the fiber is not going to go from the tower that's six miles away farther.
Is that how far it is, six miles?
These two are six miles, yes.
Six miles, that we would not be able to do that. Additionally, although it seems that it would be more affordable, as you know, SUEZ is a utility, ultimately, those costs all get passed on to the rate payers, and this seems like a much better, more affordable, simple solution to this on a tested, time-tested, true system for relaying this sort of information that's been used for years.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other testimony, I will close the, the public hearing on, I gotta On this application, I got to get my papers. All right, on application number 202103161A, John Robb, appeal, planning is on the Commission's approval. I'm going to close that public hearing, and the, the board will take this into consideration. Is there, public hearing being closed, all testimony being presented that wanted to present? Is there a discussion amongst the board?
Well, sure, Mr. Chair, I guess I can start off. So obviously, we're going to hear an actual 5G application immediately after this, and this is obviously not going to be the last tower application, and we're going to hear more as we go. And I think, you know, the Commissioners are very cognizant of a lot of the concerns that have been raised and recognize this is kind of an evolving area of law and an evolving area of science, and, you know, we've heard we just don't know what all the effects are and, and, you know, what the actual proof is that, to substantiate some of the allegations being made. But we, we do hear with the concerns. But we, we do hear what the concerns are, and, you know, we are looking at putting in fiber optic ring around the county with, with some of the ARPA money, we're in consultation with the other cities. And we are, you know, looking at the, the long-term, you know, future of the valley, and, and what all these towers are gonna do. Um, but as far as, as the hearing tonight goes, and on, and on this very specific tower, which is not a 5G tower, um, so a lot of the considerations that, you know, we've been hearing don't really apply to this, but there are concerns, and concerns were raised. Um, you know, from what I saw, I think that I would possibly, uh, like to put an additional condition of requirement regarding fire suppression. Uh, so it sounds like we're not actually in a fire district, and there's just sort of a, a general plan, but not a specific plan regarding fire suppression, and just based on some of the testimony we've heard, um, I would think that I would like to, you know, discuss putting a condition of approval that a fire suppression plan be, uh, drawn up and signed off on by one of the, one of the fire agencies, and I'm not sure which one that would be, whether it's Whitney or BLM, um, really any of them, I think, uh, if we had the, some kind of a fire marshal sign off on the plan, go inspect the site. I think that would make a lot of people feel more comfortable. I mean, we did hear testimony that there's not really full-time workers there, so if, you know, my concern is that if something did spark up, that, uh, there may not be somebody there to, you know, even call, um, the nine-one-one, contact the sheriff's department, who would have to either contact BLM or Whitney to, to dispatch somebody. So that is something I'm, I'm looking to include. Um, I'm also wondering about including maybe a one-year review, if this is granted, so that we could look at, um, any evidence related to possible health or safety or welfare of the community that it may affect, um, over the coming year. Um, now, we did hear, you know, a lot of talk about propagation studies, we've heard from staff that it's not required under, under the code. That seems to be more applicable to the pri-, uh, the public towers, which we're gonna be hearing about next. And, um, just, uh, in general to the public, you know, I think we, again, we're gonna be hearing a lot more of these applications as, as we, the years go on. Just FYI to the public, we probably need to start approaching these hearings more like a, a court trial than just a hearing. So, that means if you have evidence, if you have studies, if you have test results, anything, it really does need to be submitted to the commission first, because it really, it's tough to evaluate statements that aren't backed up by, um, proof or evidence or sworn testimony, or, or study results, anything like that. So it's, it is very hard just to consider, you know, the anecdotal evidence without having something in front of you. I think Suez did a lot of work to, you know, address the concerns, uh, but obviously there are still gonna be concerns. So, um, with that, Mr. Chair, I hand that back over to you.
Okay, Mr. Ken, do you have anything?
No, I think Commissioner Davidson, uh, covered it nicely, and I think, um, if you include those conditions of approval in your motion, I'd be inclined to go along with it.
You have motions, Commissioner Davidson?
All right, well, get my sheet out. So, to staff, this would be a, a motion to approve with additional con-, uh...
No, this is, this is a motion to deny the application, because this is the approval.
Motion to deny the application, okay.
It's the appeal, so you're gonna, yeah, uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision?
So I would, I would move to deny the appeal, uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's determination, and add additional conditions of approval.
Yep.
Okay. The conditions of approval would be that, um, a recognized fire agency, uh, sign off on a fire suppression plan. Um, and that, uh, we have a one-year, um, review to, uh, review for any issues related to whether or not this is detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the public.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If we could add to that, I think the, um, the habitat, the wildlife, the birds of prey as well, as part of that, not just the public.
Okay, to include them in the...
If there's any, yeah.
Okay.
The evidence of detriment to...
Any evidence of detriment to the, uh, the birds of prey, specifically in any wildlife, uh, insects, things like that. Uh, and that would be, that would be the motion.
Are we going to need to table this?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Kenyon, um, technically to add conditions of approval, we would be able to do that with a motion like this. There is some concern from, obviously from the original applicant with the fire condition of approval, so that may be an option to table, so we could, uh, look at the language to come up with something that, that, uh, that works for them, that doesn't, uh, cause concern, but...
So we could do that, we could table it, um, so we could, um, further discuss this with the applicable, um, fire district, local, closest fire district, so they can come up with the plan that's put in the application, and make sure that they have, um, access and training.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, the challenge here, again, is this is not, as has been stated on the record, not in a fire district, so the challenge will be finding somebody who's willing to sign off on that, that plan, so...
Fire district? Yeah. Well, there's a, there's a memorandum of understanding, there, if there's a fire, they're gonna respond, but we wanna know, is who's gonna respond? Basically, response time, they have access into the property, and they can drive their trucks into the property if something did happen.
Yeah, maybe Madam Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, or Miss, or, sorry, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, may be adding those specifics into your motion on what you're looking for.
Okay.
Maybe make it more feasible to, to make it happen.
Okay, sure.
Well, the only issue with the specifics is, 'cause it's not in the actual district, um, which one should we require? Should that be BLM, or should that be Whitney? Does staff any, have any thoughts?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, I, I believe it's the State Farm Marshal here, Newt, and I cannot remember his last name, I think I tried to give it to you during our briefing, and I apologize. Um, we can certainly reach out to Newt to talk about what that, what the details of that could include. I, I think if you are looking to table this, just knowing, I'm being selfish, but thinking of all of our hearings moving forward, we might wanna table it to like a Development Services staff meeting, uh, which is open to the public, we could have the applicant there and members, you know, however that works, but, um, but we can certainly coordinate with the Ada County Engineer and, and State Fire Marshal on what that looks like, and get some specifics for you. Um, for, you know, forcing them to sign off on something might not be exactly what they do, but it would be probably a discussion as to what their emergency response looks like to the site, and, and making sure that the, the Board of Commissioners is comfortable with that. Um, so I, I don't know if that's what you, you know, I don't wanna necessarily have them sign off on a fire plan if that's not what their agency already does, they might, that might even be a thing that's an option, but I think we can have a conversation with them about what emergency response to the site looks like, and who's involved, and to provide that overview to the board and to the public, so...
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
And I, I'd like them to just inspect the site, too, and see if they have any, any concerns, so...
And to reiterate points made earlier, Ada County Engineer does, um, have a, will do a final inspection, and they do enforce IDAPA rules for development services in Ada County, and IDAPA is also kind of the same standards that the fire departments use to inspect sites as well. So there's, there is, you know, a consistency between fire access widths, how they're designed, turnarounds, all those things. So, so I think it could be a coordinated effort between Ada County Engineer and, and that, um, State Fire Marshal, if that's suitable for the board.
And, and just a comment, I mean, this is not an extraordinary request, we have these, you know, uh, fire agencies sign off on, on a lot of development projects, correct?
Uh, yes, Chairman Commissioners, I wasn't saying, I, I only hesitate with the term "sign off," if that's not...
(laughing)
I just want to use whatever their process is, and I'm not sure the name of it, but if, in general, I think you want the okay from them, that this will work. And so I think we can, whatever that is that occurs with the state, we can work to get that for the board.
Okay, so we need to table this to a certain date?
And, Mr. Chairman, uh, we could target our Development Services staff meeting, which is on May nineteenth at, uh, two-thirty. And, uh, our agenda's due tomorrow, but we can certainly add that to it, and, and then assign, uh, folks to, to take a look.
Well, then you'd want, you'd need to put it back on OBM or another meeting for, so that the board could vote on it?
Mr. Chairman, that, that is, again, an open, open meeting, um, I believe you can put action items on it, and adopt those findings if, if you choose to do so, or we could table it at that point to another meeting if, if needed as well.
Okay, well...
So do I need to restate the motion to table till May nineteenth?
I think that would be great, thank you.
All right, we'll move to table to May nineteenth to, um, address the issues related to the, uh, fire plan, one-year review, and, um, how's that sound?
Chairman Commissioners, I think that's something staff can work with, we'll get, we'll work to get something by May nineteenth.
All right.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right, you've heard the motion, it's been moved and seconded, uh, and I guess all parties are clear on the, uh...
And that's not a public hearing, that's you discussing it amongst yourselves, and we can be present.
No, it is open to the public.
It's open to the public, but it's not a public hearing.
No more testimony will be taken.
No more testimony. Well, I've closed the public hearing out, there's no more testimony on this issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, with that, I'll call for question, all in favor, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye, right?
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, the issue will be tabled until May nineteenth at the, at the, at a staff hearing, or staff, uh, meeting. Okay, um, I'm gonna use my prerogative and take about a five-minute break, we've been sitting here since six o'clock.
Come on, power through. Come on, power through.
Section 202-103048A. William Lind, appeal to planning, zoning commission approval of a conditional use to construct a 100-foot commercial cell tower. Property is located at 12016 West Floating Feather Road and contains 2.88 acres. I will open the public hearing on application 202-103048A. William Lind. We'll take a report from our staff first.
Thank you, Chairman. You said it correctly. Application 202-103048, this is the appeal of the conditional use permit. The app, the appellant is William Lind. This is an appeal of that planning and zoning commission's approval of the conditional use to construct 100-foot tall commercial cell tower. Clark Wardell, LOP, was the original applicant who is working with Vertical Bridge on the project. The property is located off Floating Feather Road, borders the city of Starr to the east. This is a 2.88 acre parcel, like you said. Address off 12016 West Floating Feather Road. Now, the property is zoned as rural residential. Now, here's an aerial of the property. As you can see here, it's an irregular-shaped parcel smashed between Floating Feather Road there and the Middleton Canal. So, the leased area for the tower will contain 2,500 square feet. That's that area there in, in red, more or less, and will be to the north of where it was previously proposed. It was proposed more to the southwest corner of the property, but the city of Starr, ACHD, and Compass instructed that the Floating Feather extension cannot be infringed upon. There are future plans, it sounds like, to extend Floating Feather Road to the west. The tower is proposed to improve service for wireless users and devices in the area as identified in the propagation map. There were towers identified within a two-mile radius of the property, but co-location was not granted. The proposed tower will be able to accommodate up to three individual carriers. Fall zone and setback requirements meet Ada County code, and the PMZ Commission approved the application at their February 10th hearing. Mr. Lind has appealed the PMZ Commission's decisions. At his, and his comments are those to start here, and then staffs has responded to those with those statements here underlined. So, I'll just go through them real quick and read them off. The appellant's first comment was that no report was included with the application from a qualified and licensed professional engineer that describes the facility's capacity to transmit cell tower signals and other related information necessary to fully evaluate the requests. The staff responded that tower engineering professionals, INC., is a licensed engineer that has provided required plans and reporting. The next statement is that no demonstration that the location where the tower is to be located is not a public nuisance, and that the tower itself will not become a public nuisance once installed. It is a term of approval that the owners of the facility shall have continuous obligation to ensure that the maintenance and upkeep is not a public nuisance to surrounding properties. They also noted that a distorted propagation map was submitted in support of the application with no sufficient supporting evidence of how they establish the existing coverage range and how they are to achieve the proposed coverage range. A propagation map and written analysis demonstrating that the facility cannot be accommodated on an existing or approved tower within a two-mile radius has been included with the applicant's proposal. Coverage in the area will increase as a result of the cell tower. Next, the appellant stated that nothing in the supporting documents indicates a NEPA review has been performed. Staff noted that agency transmittal to federal, state, and local agencies was performed. There were no agencies that provided opposition or concerns with the proposed cell tower. The next county's authorities derive from Idaho State Constitution and the Local Land Use Planning Act, not the Federal Communications Commission or Federal Telecommunications Act. Staff will note that Section 332(c)(7) of the Communications Act preempts local decisions premised directly or indirectly on the environmental effects or radio frequency emissions, assuming that the provider is in compliance with the Commission's RF rules. Both the Board of County Commissioners and Planning and Zoning Commission have heard the application tonight and the PMZ Commission in their last hearing, and you have the ability to place conditions on the project as you see, as you see fit. Lastly, not compatible with surrounding uses. The application is for a commercial cell tower. It's a conditional use in the rural residential zone. It is compatible with the comp plan for the city of Starr and their future land use map, and the tower will provide improved phone and internet services to surrounding residents and businesses in the area. We did receive public comments and opposition both at the Planning and Zoning Commission's hearing and for this hearing tonight. The main points are visual impacts, potential health impacts, and then loss of property value. Those were all raised in the letters we received. Staff recommends denial of the appeal and upholds the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of the conditional use, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Connor, can you show us a larger picture of where this residential property lies within the scope of neighborhoods or proposed new neighborhoods?
I'll go to this vicinity map here. So, is this, I mean, this is the best I have for you right at this moment. Yeah, there's the Floating Feather Road terminates there at the property, and then Munger Road goes to the north. There's some subdivisions to the northeast, southeast, and to the south as well. I don't know if that helps.
So, did the applicant attempt to place this first on federal land, state land, county, ACHD, all of the above?
Chairman Beck, Commissioner Kenyon, yes, it is a requirement that they reach out to all the various agencies, ACHD, federal agencies, and other towers as well to see if they can place their tower on their lands or co-locate. That is a requirement, and...
Can you show me how close BLM land is to this proposed site?
Um, I can't off, right now.
Scroll so we can see if you...
Um, this is just an image, so I, this isn't...
Oh, you can't scroll, okay.
Sorry.
Could staff possibly look that up and let us know how far BLM land is to this proposed site?
Chairman, Commissioners, yes, we can look that up, and we'll have maybe Connor share it, his screen, so it's viewable for everybody.
Yeah.
And part of the record, so...
Okay, thank you. And then, so, we had letters back that they could not co-locate. What were the reasons that the other cell tower owners provided why they wouldn't allow them to co-locate?
Commissioner Kenyon, I am not fully sure. Many of the, basically, the applicant provided certified mailings to these other tower owners, seeing if they can co-locate. They have letters in there that they've provided to us. Many of those entities did not provide them with the letters saying whether or not they could or could not co-locate. It's more so they're just not letting them. They provided their certified mail slip showing that they received the notification, but for whatever reason, they're not allowing co-location. Hopefully, the applicant can also address that further.
Right, well, Mr. Chair, I think this is something for the board and for staff to note, that we have been approving some of these cell towers, the recent cell towers, on the premise that they will allow co-locating. And now, they're just sending a receipt saying they're not going to, and that's not good enough for me, because that was part of the application approval process. So, I don't know how we want to handle that, but I'm not happy with them just sending a blank "no."
It sounds like you didn't respond at all.
They did with certified mail back, but basically just "no," right? They didn't give a reason.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, that's an issue.
Okay. All right, any further questions of our staff? You can keep looking, and we'll keep, when you get it, we'll, we'll pause and listen to it, or watch it, see where, where the BLM is. And that is Bureau of Land Management, by the way.
Well, geez, here we go. It's getting late. It's getting late.
Yeah. Is Mr. Lind in?
Yes.
You, could you state your name again for the record? And you have 15 minutes. Are you going to share that with Mr. DeHos?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I just kind of set the table here tonight? We've all been kind of through this before. You know that the county cannot make a denial based on health issues or concerns, and so it doesn't do us any good to hear testimony along those lines. We know there are concerns out there. We may agree with those, and we actually, this prior board did deny on that, just to see how far it'd go, and, and we lost in court. So, we bend down that path, and so, just so, we're not spending a lot of time on an issue that, that we can't weigh in on at this point. Thank you.
Yeah. My name is William Lind, and I live, I'm a resident of Starr, Idaho. Good evening, Ada County Commissioners. I bring to your attention the following points to consider in the appeal of 202-103048CU, 100-foot commercial cell tower in the Starr area. First point that needs to be stated is, I don't see that there's been evaluation of alternative sites other than the statement in the Clark Wardell Detailed Narrative Letter, page three. Quote, "The applicant conducted an exhaustive site research, and the subject parcel was the only site candidate that met all search criteria," unquote. Well, we just heard from staff that the responses back to the applicant were not definitive in, and, and no, and why they were denying the co-location requests. So, I really don't feel, and we don't even know if BLM land is available or not, so I don't think all the alternatives were exhausted before applying for this site. If the applicant has the burden of proving such for the Federal Telecommunications Act, is a proposed location the only appropriate location for this tower, and what is the reasoning? Can there be co-location? Co-location's always preferred to a new tower. There are towers that are within two miles of this proposed site. There have been maps and submitted by public testimony that show sites for co-location, and there's existing wireless network coverage with no gap in coverage. I have pictures to give to you that have evidence, and a copy of a propagation study that show that there is no gap in coverage. And I can definitely say tonight, there is no gap in coverage in our area. So, we have coverage, cellphone coverage. We have wireless coverage there. You can turn on your phone, and you can download things from the internet. You can get cellphone calls and text messages, no problem. The subject parcel is adjacent to a property designated for a 90-home subdivision, and as you saw, there were existing, there were existing homes already built and in that area, very close to where the tower is proposed to be built. I have a photo, I have a couple photos here that I'd like to put in to exhibit that demonstrate what kind of, and show what a 100-foot tower looks like plopped into the middle of a rural residential area where I live. So, I'll give those to you. These, these pictures were produced to show you what the 100-foot cellphone, cellphone tower, without all the complete equipment attached to that tower, because we're not sure what, how much equipment's going to be attached to that tower.
Is this an actual picture, is it, or is it...
No, it's the tower put in, superimposed, had pictures in the actual area, so to show you what a...
Photoshopped in.
Photoshopped in.
Yes, photoshopped in. It's to show you what the tower would look like in that area. Second photo compares the height of a 100-foot tower to a 10-story building to show you the effect of visual effect and impact that a 100-foot cell tower has. One of the things that's important for granting a conditional use permit is whether it's going to cause some type of hazard, nuisance, or problem. You can't get a guaranteed loan, FHA, FA loan, in a fall zone because it's hazardous. This is federal law. Starr's proposed 100-foot cell tower is adjacent to property designated for a 90-home subdivision. The proposed tower would be less of a blight in an industrial complex instead of an adjacent to a residential zone. Instead, it should be co-located. The Federal Telecommunications Act specifically provides, preserves all planning and zoning authority in Ada County, and that includes making sure that this is actually needed. Is there a gap in coverage? It's not our job to demonstrate that. It's the applicant's burden under federal law that demonstrate there's a gap in coverage, and this is the least intrusive way to handle it. The application, the applicant failed to do this. The large majority of people who live and will live in this area will not see a net benefit from the installation of the cell tower. So, why install the tower in the first place? What is the motivation? Basically, it comes down to financial gain of a small group of people and a perception of the need for an expanded wireless network for the area that I live in without real proof. Most of the people who already live in this area did not have any expectation of a 100-foot cell tower being installed when they moved into their homes, and that includes me. We did not move into this location motivated to have a 100-foot cell tower installed near our homes. I appealed this project to you in the hopes that you will exercise your autonomy involving the review of the cellphone tower, conditional use permit, and overturn the approval by planning and zoning. I realize I can't tell you how to do your job, but I can petition you with a complaint and ask that you take action. Please take a step back, look at the merits of the appeal, and I urge you to deny 202-103048CU permit. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Chair, will you stand, please? Stand for questions. So, this exhibit, tell, walk us through what this is.
It's a propagation study that shows the existing wireless coverage in the area.
And who conducted this?
Uh, it was, uh, Hank Allen. It was Hank Allen.
And is he certified to do this?
I believe so.
You don't know.
But I don't know.
I will when he testifies. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, one more question for you. So, you did say that, you know, in your opinion, there's not a need for more coverage because you're, you're able to use your phone, but isn't that also a little bit anecdotal, because the question is, you know, if 1,000 people during rush hour are using their phone, are they getting enough data?
Well, our area is residential and farming. There are no commercial locations in our area. So, and we don't have major roads going through our area, like Highway 16 or highway, or State Highway 44. So, to think that really there's a need to increase coverage in our area, it just is not there. They, it cannot be proven that they need to increase it. We already have it. There's no gap in coverage.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
You probably don't know this, but I'm going to ask anybody, just in case you do. Commissioner Davidson mentioned before that we've created a coalition with our sister cities and with Ada County to provide a broadband loop. Do you know if that broadband loop goes by this area?
I'm not sure. I know it's, Eagles signed on to it.
Starr has as well, so that's what I'm wondering, if it goes all the way down Floating Feather.
Starr, I don't know if Starr, the city of Starr, has committed to this or not. I'm not sure.
All right, we'll look into that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, you're going to finish, Mr. DeHos, you're going to finish...
Yes, I'm going to finish. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So, in the original application, you did not get the data you needed. You needed a propagation study, and we'll talk, speak to that specifically today, because the very first paragraph of the Telecommunications Act of 1996, paragraph C7A, which entitled General Authority, under General Authority, Congress deliberately preserved to you the general authority to regulate the placement of these wireless facilities wherever you want, is what that means. There are perfectly valid legal grounds for denying an application of this conditional use permit, both under the unified Land Use Act ordinance and federal law. However, also provide that if you were to deny this application, any denial has to be based upon substantial evidence. One of the things local governments have been doing across the entire United States is to try to minimize the number of towers you need to provide personal wire services. And to do that, anytime an applicant submits an application, they require the applicant to provide probative data, not computer-generated propagation maps, which have no probative value, in order to enable this board to determine, is this a good spot for a wireless facility? You need the data. The most common form of the data is the drive test. If you get the drive test data, which is very simple, they take a recording device, attach it to a phone, drive through the area, and that recording device gives you the actual signal strength throughout the jurisdiction. That data, that actual probative data, shows you, number one, the existence or absence of gaps in service. Number two, the geographic location of those gaps. The application, this applicant did not provide any of that to you. He's got a map, but any first grader could have drawn that map. I mean, there's no data in there. There's no whatsoever. The applicant, uh, let's see here. So, for years, applicants have provided basically these generated maps, and so the FCC said, you know, how's this working out? So, they did a study. They did 10,000 miles of drive testing. This is the FCC. They conducted 24,000 tests in nine states, and what the FCC found was that the propagation maps that were submitted by companies, like the companies submitting tonight, the accuracy of those computer-generated propagation maps ranged below of 16.2% to a maximum of 64% accuracy. And so, the staff advised the FCC, they should no longer accept computer-generated propagation maps without hard data. You have no hard data in this application. For that reason alone, this should be denied, because they failed to provide that. It's incomplete application to begin with. If they want to claim that the tower is needed for capacity deficiency, the most common form of data they can provide is dropped call records. If they claim AT&amp;T has a capacity deficiency, ATT can use its computer and print out a list of all dropped calls for any specific location for any period of time. It's a few keystrokes. None of that has been submitted here. Simply put, the applicant has failed to give you enough data to put you in a position to determine if, in fact, this tower is necessary at all, much less at this location or at this height.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So, when did the FCC make that determination? How was that reported?
This was, this particular study was just done this last year.
And where did they report that? Is it in article?
It's in the, it's in the FCC.
Okay.
Did you want to submit that for exhibit, for the record?
Yeah, yes.
Bring it on up, and we'll add it too.
Mr. Chair, so I got sort of a question for legal, but, you know, the more we...
Legal can't give any legal advice at a, at a public hearing.
All right, well, I'll hold off.
Not going into executive session.
Without going into executive session.
Well, I guess I'm not asking for legal advice, but just sort of the, you know, sort of the impression I get about the, the rules that we have and the policies is that, you know, it, it requires certain things, but it doesn't necessarily specify what's, you know, we keep hearing about propagation studies, it seems like it doesn't mandate what is actually included in those studies. So, it seems to be a gray area on some of these that, you know, like we've just heard, the applicant just basically sent a letter back saying no, without any real data, but our code doesn't seem to require that. our code doesn't seem to require that. So is it sort of a little bit of a gray area where it's kind of a loophole that's companies can go through where, because we didn't specify what should be required, they're maybe taking advantage of that?
But it's up to our discretion.
It's up to our discretion, yeah. Propagation studies are a function of our code, correct?
Yes, 851148, I have it written down here.
And it's up to this part?
85314D-B.
And it's up to this part to determine-
And it's up to us to determine the efficacy of the propagation studies. Is that not correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
But you need the data.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I want to go ahead and submit these exhibits right now.
Yeah, submit, you can get them prepared for that, for when we close the, close the-
Yes, I'm going to submit into the record Mr. Lynn's presentation as Exhibit 21A, and then Mr. DeHaas's paper that he just gave you is 22A. So 21A and 22A for the record.
Thank you.
All right, now we have allowed the original applicant, if you'd like to present, you have 15 minutes. Go ahead. Could you tell your name for the record?
Yeah, absolutely. Joshua Leonard, and my address is 251 East Front Street, Suite 310. I'm just right across the street.
Sure. And you, you represent somebody, or?
Yes, thank you. I represent Vertical Bridge, the applicant, the original applicant in this. As Mr. Davidson stated earlier, different from the appellant.
Yes, are you their counsel?
I am their legal counsel, yes.
All right, go ahead.
Is this the correct?
Yes, beautiful. If I could, my time's already started running. I'm already 30 seconds down. I appreciate the opportunity to present this application today, and I appreciate staff and all their work on this. I want to clarify really quickly, one thing that was said, there are no towers within two miles of this site. We sent out letters, as required by Ada County Code, asking other carriers to co-locate on our site, not to co-locate on any sites, because there are no towers for us to co-locate on within two miles of our chosen location. We didn't get any responses back from carriers, and that's not unlikely, or that's not uncommon. That, it's not how business is done among the carriers. What they do is they see a tower go up, they notice that they've got a deficiency, and then they contact the tower operator. By me sending a letter to them in advance, even a certified letter, they get it, it probably gets banned, it probably gets thrown right away. It's just not how that, how that works. And I'd be happy to give you some ideas for, as you, I know you're doing a code rewrite on how that, how to make that more effective, because there are ways to make that more effective. If you could, let's start through the, really quickly, a presentation outline, we don't need to spend much time there. Fact to the glance is next. Staff's covered that, it's also covered in the documentation in front of you on the record. If we can go to the next. Top left-hand corner, the orange arrow, that's where this is, the location that we're talking about, next slide. And zoomed-in picture of the site. Note that the subject properties at the corner are Floating Feather and Munger Road. Munger Road doesn't go further south than Floating Feather right there, and Floating Feather currently doesn't go further west beyond Munger. That's going to be important in just a minute. The next slide, the cross, the crosshatched area is unincorporated Ada County. As you know, that's where Ada County Code, zoning code is in effect, even though it's within Star's area city impact. Next slide. This is our original site plan, I'm not going to spend very much time on it because it's already outdated. Next slide. City of Star was, sent our application for comment and provided comment, next slide. They've adopted an economic corridors and access and roadway connection management plan, it's a mouthful. On that, Floating Feather is proposed to be extended west. Next slide. Star's comment included this image, showing the alignment approximately in orange of where Floating Feather would be extended. And you can see where they wanted us, where Star wanted us to move the location in order to avoid potential conflict with that future alignment. Next slide. That's exactly what we did. We moved it north and east to accommodate Floating Feather. Ada County Highway District staff weighed in and blessed this location and said it would not be a conflict for Floating Feather. Next slide. This shows our tower at full build-out. It depicts the tower with one anchor tenant, that's AT&amp;T, and then three co-location tenants. So we have a total of four opportunities for co-location, or, excuse me, three opportunities for co-location, four location opportunities for antenna at this site. Next slide. As I mentioned, we're required by Ada County Code to show the existing towers. We've got that here, next slide. And also distance to existing towers. The closest, 2.7 miles. The other towers are 6 miles, 6 miles, 4.9, and 3.9 miles. There's not one in this area that we could co-locate on that serves our desired coverage area. So we were asking other carriers if they would want to locate on our tower. Next slide. Really quickly about an alternate site analysis. We discussed an alternate, the alternate sites before the Planning and Zoning Commission, but not at any great length, because alternate site wasn't raised as an issue there. We knew it would be here, so we prepared an alternate site analysis. First step in that is to determine a search ring. The carrier provides us a ring around which they want, or within which they want to provide additional coverage, or that their coverage is lacking. The next thing we look at is zoning. Is there a way to build a tower on this property? Is it an approved use as a matter of right, or is it a conditional use? Either of those were good. Compliance with dimensional standards. We need to have a property that doesn't just, doesn't just have correct zoning, it has the right dimensions. We need to meet setbacks. One thing that was mentioned during one of the comments was that the federal government won't write loans, won't write FHA loans on properties within the fall zone. In this instance, the fall zone is entirely within this property. It's not, it doesn't overlap onto other property owned by other people. Next, oh, excuse me, I'll go one little bit further. Practical concerns, existing improvements. We don't want to do a lot of upgrade to existing improvements. For example, if there's a house, we don't want to have to relocate it or move it. We don't, we also, if there's a, if there is a canal, as there, or a ditch, as there is in this case, we don't want to have to tile that or move, or move around that. And then the last one, which is often the most important and the most difficult to find, is a willing landowner. Somebody who will lease us a 55, 50 by 50-foot pad on their property. Next slide. These are the alternative sites, the only ones within the area that were available or that we considered. And the reason why we considered these is because they met all of the first four of the conditions or criteria I mentioned to you. The problem with, with a couple of these, and it's noted on there, was that they were too far outside the search ring. They didn't provide the coverage that was necessary to be improved in these areas. One of them, the city of Star, didn't want a wireless facility in their park, because there just wasn't a place to locate it, and one of them was a middle school where the West Ada School District doesn't, doesn't sublease their property. Next slide.
Can you go back to that slide? What was the Ada County one? Dawes Place, okay. Okay, thank you.
RF justification. People go where, or, excuse me, towers go where people are. We heard in the last public hearing, there's a lot of undeveloped land, and I hear this at every cell tower meeting that I go to, or cell tower public hearing, there's a lot of vacant land. Why do they have to locate in an area that has houses? It's because that's where the people are, and that's where the people are using their cell phones. A tower that's located in the middle of a field may not offend very many owner or neighbors, but it also won't be, it won't be of any use, it won't have anyone to serve. One thing I wanted to point out here, detailed RF justification was included in our information that we submitted. To give you the short version, though, this facility is necessary to expand, or to facilitate an expanded network. In particular, though, and I'll get to it in just a second, this is for in-building coverage, and that's, that'll be important, as I said, in just a moment. Next slide. This is the before coverage. A lot has been said about propagation maps. I will tell you that all your code says is propagation map. If you want the data, you need to put it in your code, and we'll comply with it. To ask us on the day of a hearing, or to require it ad hoc after we've submitted an application is difficult to comply with. Again, happy to help you with your code rewrite to make, make it very particular as to what you're looking for. I'm absolutely willing to do that. This is the site, the coverage before the site. If you see the legend up in the top right-hand corner, good in-building is dark green, good in-vehicle is light green, and good outdoor is in light blue. This area has good outdoor. It does not have good vehicle, and it does not have good in-building. The reason why that's important, federal court, federal courts have now determined that in-building coverage, or a lack of in-building coverage, is sufficient to prove a substantial gap in coverage. In this case, the lack of in-building and in-vehicle coverage is a significant gap in coverage that needs to be filled. In our parlance in the industry, we call it a coverage hole, and that's what we're dealing with here. If you've ever been around teenagers, or if you have teenagers of your own, I have a couple, an 18-year-old and a 16-year-old, they very rarely use their cell phones in the backyard. When they're in the backyard, they're mowing it. When they're in the house, they're using their cellphone. And this will improve the ability in this area and the capacity and the signal strength in this area for in-building coverage. The next slide. This is after. You can see that good in-building coverage is provided and is available after this tower is built. Seeing this in a vacuum isn't that helpful. The next slide shows a side-by-side comparison. Next slide. So before, we have good outdoor and spotty in-vehicle and very, and no good in-building coverage. And then after, we have good in-building coverage. We fill that coverage hole. Next slide. This, on this slide, I made the cardinal sin of PowerPoints. I put a lot of words and no pictures, and I apologize. I'm just going to give you the gist. The appeal is without merit. On each of the six points raised by the appellant, he was incorrect, and we actually comply with what's required by Ada County Code, and we, and we conform to the Star City Conference Plan. Next slide. The opponents submitted a propagation map, they're, not a map, but they submitted what they called data. I want to talk to you a little bit about that. First, though, they used a carrier website map to show that there was coverage. You can see this is from, this is from their, their submittal. Next slide. They failed to include, however, and they conveniently cut off from their image, the disclaimer that's at the bottom of the website, just below where they cut it off. It's there, it says, the one on the right is the one that I took from their, their website, showing those, those initial primary disclaimers, where it says, for example, let's see if I can read that, it's too blurry up here. Oh, approximate outdoor coverage. Doesn't talk about in-building coverage, and that's what we're trying to improve. Next slide. If you click on the link that says disclaimer, there are 10 more disclaimers for the coverage. They didn't mention any of them. I want to point to two in particular, number three and number eight. Number three says, this is outdoor service, this is not in-building. Number eight says, service may vary significantly within buildings. We're trying to fix that, so that the service doesn't vary significantly within buildings. Next slide. On their plot, the plot information that they submitted over the dais today, they plotted the wrong location. They were off, based on their, based on their latitude and longitude loca, or coordinates, by almost 600 feet. Next slide. Not only that, they aimed at the wrong coverage area. The data they provided is not representative of the coverage area we're trying to fill. Our search ring centered at North Star Road, about half a mile south of West Floating Feather, and our goal is to provide coverage and, and capacity north, for the north side of Star, not for the center and, and major business district of Star. Next slide. As I mentioned, we meet the counterstandards, run low on time, I'll come back to this. Go ahead, next slide. Photo sims. One thing I wanted to point out about the photo simulation that was provided to you, it was not performed by an engineer, it was performed by Photoshop, by Photoshop, and it approximates a 250-foot guide tower. We extrapolated it out, it is two and a half times depicted on what you, what you received today from the opponents, what the actual tower will be. If you look at this on the left, it's as-is, the landscape looking south. On the right, it's with a tower with one carrier. Next slide. Again, existing as-is on the left, looking west, and with the tower in the distance on the right. Next slide. These, by the way, are two-scale, performed by engineers, extrapolating out the height to exactly 100 feet with a four-foot lightning rod. Next slide. No basis. Appellant questioned the evidence in the record, but provided no substantive or competent evidence of their own. I want to impress this on you. This is something I hear, and it's almost as though the appellant and the opponents read from a script that I hear at every one of these meetings. And I have to tell you, concerns are not evidence. The only evidence that you have before you, the only competent evidence, the only evidence from actual engineers, the only evidence that isn't, well, I heard of some case somewhere, the only evidence that is relevant today is the evidence that we provided in the applicant's packet. The opponents rely on false narratives and misinterpretations. Next page. Federal Telecom Act, you've already mentioned this, Commissioner Kenyon did. This is the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, can't be considered. Next slide. Again, meets county standards, as noted in the staff report, in the findings of fact, conclusions of law and order of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as in our narrative letter. We detail how we meet that, meet all those standards. Next slide. This is the part of the Federal Telecom Act that they don't want to talk about, and that you haven't been informed about yet. This is the, it's called an effective prohibition of telecom. And this is the provision that says, even if we don't meet Ada County standards, even if we came in and didn't meet any of them, but we established that this was a significant gap in coverage, and we are the least intrusive means of filling that gap, you're required to give us a conditional use permit for this tower, even if we don't meet any Ada County standards. The Federal Telecom Act says it preserves local land use authority, but then significantly limits it, and that's the limit that they place on it. We've not just proposed the least intrusive means of filling that coverage hole, or that significant gap, we've produced and suggested and provided the only one within that area that can do this. We've asked other landowners, we've looked at other situations, and none of them have worked, and none of them have been willing. Next slide. Based on the facts and the record, we'd ask you to deny the appeal and uphold the planning and zoning's approval of our, of our application. Stand for questions.
Okay. All right, are there questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So on your before and after map, for the tower, after the tower, what, what data research do you have that proves that the maps are accurate?
Sure. So we actually have an RF engineer on the, on the phone and available that can speak to that.
Maybe he could call in through the system.
Yeah, I'm not going to do it through my phone, certainly not.
Okay, well, you can get that lined up, and we'll come back to that.
Sure, Shad Rydolch is his name, and he's on, he should be on there. Okay.
Okay. How far is that tower from BLM land, proposed tower?
The calculation that I came up with, to the, to a site that's large enough to accommodate a tower like this, was 2.94 miles. Staff found one a little bit closer that I was unaware of.
And is that too far to be effective, according to you?
It is. It's, it's outside the, outside of the carrier search ring that they provided, and so it doesn't work to provide coverage to the area that we're seeking to provide coverage. What it would do is it would result in additional towers. We'd need to do that one and others. It just means more towers.
And how do you test for the in-home signal strength?
That's a really good question. I'd leave that to our, to our RF engineer, I'm a lawyer.
Well, we can come back to him.
Sure. Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner David.
What's fall zone?
Fall zone, according to Ada County Code, the fall zone is one foot for every 10 feet of height.
Yeah. And this one is within-
Yeah, that's what he said, that's why I asked, what's fall zone?
Yeah.
Because I thought it might be defined, but I just didn't know that.
Oh, you're good, you're good.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I guess we probably bring up, since we brought it up in the last one, you know, fire suppression plans.
Sure. First, let me tell you, this is in a, this is in a populated area. You're going to get 1,500 calls from people when, if you were, if they were to see fire coming out of this. To answer a question that was asked earlier in a, what the, you know, whether that people have heard of or seen one of these, I've, I've been in Idaho now for almost 20 years. What I, I heard the other day is called a first wave Idahoan, not a native, but a first wave.[1795.36] What I heard the other day is called a first-wave Idahoan, not a native, but a first-wave. I have never heard of one that this happened to in Idaho. I can tell you that there are anecdotal stories of ones of first or second-generation, early-generation towers, particularly east of the Mississippi where they were up before either catching fire. All of those are, earlier I heard testimony that there were thousands of pictures. There may be thousands of pictures, but they're of the same five towers burning. And the information that was gleaned from the fires that caught in the very early-generation towers have been used to engineer better towers that we have today, and this is one of them. As far as fire suppression, again, I've just never heard of one happening. We gravel the ground in the compound around it, so that it's not going to go anywhere if it did catch fire, and they're designed to collapse on themselves as opposed to tipping over. They're designed to, the word's not accordion, but it's like an accordion, you know, it engineers by slipping down on top of itself.
Like Building 7?
I don't know about Building 7.
Okay. So what's the risk of lightning strikes on a tower like this?
The risk of it striking is probably pretty high. I can tell you, however, the lightning rod that's on the top is four feet tall and is fully grounded.
And that's designed to prevent fires from occurring?
It absolutely is, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Davidson, it absolutely is.
All right, that's all I had.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
If there were fiber in Floating Feather, would you need a tower?
Yes. The fiber for Floating Feather, that's fun to say, the fiber for Floating Feather would serve the tower, not the wireless devices. The benefit of fiber is to support Wi-Fi and is to support wired applications, not something as portable as your phone, where you aren't going to be trailing a wire behind you when you leave the house, obviously.
So the testimony that was given previously, well, never mind, it was a different case.
Yeah. For their application, for their use, they probably could, because it's point-to-point. It would probably benefit them. In this instance, where we've got tens of thousands of users or more pinging a single tower, it just wouldn't pencil that way. It wouldn't work.
And then how close was that BLM property that you said you didn't identify early?
Commissioner Kenyon, it's 1.23 miles. Based off the Fish and Games map, if we can trust them.
Yeah, that's all I have for now.
Okay. All right.
It was easy.
Yeah, thank you.
So far, thank you.
You're subject to recall.
We have some more testimony, of course.
And Chairman Beck, I'm going to enter in Mr. Leonard's presentation as Exhibit 23A.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to hear from neighbors' testimony first, before we have non-neighbors come up and testify.
Well, I suppose I can ask, are you neighbors? Because I don't have it on our list here. So, any neighbors, raise your hand. You can testify first.
Got one.
Okay, you got one. All right. Could you give us your name for the record?
Can I wait till the slides come up?
Yes.
Cause I got too much stuff, like normal. Hi, my name is Tom Garrick. I do live in Star. I would like to encourage you folks to preserve Star's appearance by supporting our appeal. Next slide, please. The proposed tower's...
Mr. Chair? Could you tell us how close you are to the proposed cell tower site?
Roughly one-half mile away, to the north.
Half a mile away?
Yes. So, even though it might, the words were that this is consistent with Star's comprehensive plan, I have a different argument that it's actually not. County Code states, "Towers are to be architecturally, visually compatible with existing structures, vegetation uses, or those likely to exist in the area under the terms of the applicable comprehensive plan." Star's comprehensive plan from 2020 shows the entire west side of Star will soon become residential. Toll Brothers has begun a conversion to residential. There's a preliminary plat map that Mr. Lynn talked about. Next slide, please. So this is the portion of Star's comprehensive plan where it actually shows the intended uses, click please, and most of the area around the proposed site is either neighborhood residential or estate residential. Next, please. That pink box that just came in is where our friends at Toll Brothers are building. Next, please. That's the next subdivision that's going to come in, so the residential conversion's occurring. Next, please. Okay, so this is my argument here, based on county code, nothing in any residential neighborhood area is going to be architecturally or visually compatible with 100-foot cell tower with up to four antenna arrays upon it. Next, please. For perspective, yes, these are photoshopped, but the scale's pretty darn good. The Meridian Water Tower is 117 feet tall. You have a 100-foot-tall, three-array cell tower on it. I put the same 100-foot-tall tower. If you look and how the power pole next to the cell tower lines up with a third power pole down, they're just about at the same 40-foot height. It's pretty darn close, scale-wise. And then, since you wanted neighborhood people, looking down Finsbury towards where this cell tower is going to be, based on the height of the trees, the height of the power poles, that's about what we're going to get to see as our view, except we could have another array of antennas. Next, please. Okay, so why not place this in a light industrial, commercial area? Trevor Chadwick told me that they turned down having this at soccer park. Next, please. That was a site they rejected. Well, look, it's all surrounded by residential areas. Maybe appearance was important to the mayor. After he's told me this, that they rejected that site, he said they didn't feel they could do anything about the other site because it was out of the city limits. And beyond that, I've got to go.
Okay, if you'd like to wrap it up, you're welcome.
No, if you want me to go.
No, no.
Okay, so real quickly, we had our meeting in February. Commissioner James Birch questioned why the tower wouldn't be near Albertson's. And then, next slide, please. I just suggest that we might look at something where there's already light industrial, commercial zoning, so that this will not be such a blight on the community.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, sure.
So my question is, so basically your argument is, eventually you believe it'll be completely residential and the tower will be surrounded by residential homes?
Yes, because it's already started.
And so, because it's aesthetically unappealing, so what is your argument? That it should be denied, or that it should be redesigned so that it looks better?
I guess if you could make it look better, that would satisfy the only excellent argument that I think we have. But according to what I've heard in February, county code states that they have to make one big enough to bring in all the co-locations, and it's almost as if what the county code states is for a rural area where the aesthetics aren't so appealing, and then if you want to put one that's right next to a residential area, they'd need to code out something else.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So this location that you identified at Highway 44 and 16, can you tell us more about that site?
Yes, could I have the next slide, please? I was saving time. So here it is. We have the Republic Mini Storage, and we have a big, ugly, commercial building that's being built on the left side, and we can see an ambulance company cell tower in the front and a regular cell tower in the back. Or if you look at it from the aerial view, you even get to see the gravel pit. Now, I realize this isn't exactly where they wanted to place one, and we might find that nobody wanted to lease the site, but to me, this would be a lot less offensive visually. They could still have their crazy-tall cell tower, all these other things, and it would, you know, just like putting it on the BLM land, it would accomplish a lot of good things.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
For the record, we're going to add this gentleman's presentation as Exhibit 24A.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have next up David Musnick. Is David here? David's not here. Vivian Lockery.
Hello again, Commissioners, thank you.
You could give your name for the record.
Vivian Lockery, resident of Ada County for 28 years. So I spent a lot of time reviewing the materials under this application. I've read the letter from Clark Waddle, the firm representing Vertical Bridge, the applicant. As far as I could tell, Vertical Bridge is the site developer. They don't provide personal wireless services. You can't get a phone contract with Vertical Bridge. You get a contract with Verizon, or AT&amp;T, or T-Mobile. Clark Waddle has not proved that an identified wireless carrier has a significant gap in personal wireless services at this location. It sounds like the tower's gone up, but where are the wireless service providers? Are they going to come? Do we, you know, build it and they're going to come? Is this just an opportunity? So it's not the appellant's obligation to prove there's no gaps. The applicant has the sole burden, as we've heard before, in proving the gap in coverage for the Federal Telecommunications Act. And then, in the Ada County Code for commercial towers, there's a section, "Additional Application Requirements for Facilities That Require a CUP." Requires a map and written analysis demonstrating the facility cannot be accommodated on an existing structure-approved tower within a two-mile radius, and this is because co-location is always preferred to a new tower. So I did an antenna search, and there's a Horizon Tower 1.3 miles from the proposed site and a Sprint Tower at 1.4 miles. Now, one of the things I looked at was the exhibits of the certified letters sent to Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile. And those are not requests to co-locate on their towers, on their existing towers, and there is a large tower up on the hill in Star that doesn't have the full four antennas on it. So it does seem there may be an opportunity for co-location on other towers. So, in these letters that were sent out to these three major carriers, it was asked that they respond within 15 days. I did not see any response from either carrier in the documents under this application. So I'm suggesting that there weren't any, that they were just soliciting, and all they're doing is building the tower. There is no actual wireless carrier identified, and if there's no wireless carrier identified, how can there be an identification of a gap in service? I find that very, very curious. We've seen that even though there seems to be some discrepancy between what we got off the internet and what Mr. Leonard got off the internet as far as these wireless services, I'm not sure there's a gap in coverage, and I'd like to see some more proof of that. So the applicant would also have you believe that denying this application is to, and this is part of the FCC regs, regulate in a manner that prohibits or has the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services, but without proof of a significant gap in services, it actually does not. So we've heard more about this site being adjacent to a property designated for a 90-home subdivision. You know, this tower is neither necessary nor reasonable. I urge you to deny this conditional use permit. You have the authority to deny under-location and aesthetics. We know we can't deny it under health or environmental effects, but we can under-location or aesthetics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question for staff.
Okay.
To the point that she just made. The letters that we're sending out, are these to the tower owners that we would need to get permission? If so, or if not, we're sending them to the wireless service providers who don't own the towers. So are we asking the wrong person to co-locate?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, to your question, I believe the applicant in their, the original applicant in their explanation was that they were not able to find any towers within that particular distance, which is why they went the opposite direction, in inquiring if folks would be interested in co-locating in this new location. So the code burdens the applicant on demonstrating that there aren't any other opportunities, which is what I believe they did in their application submission.
For future applications, I think we need to clarify that. I was sending the co-location request to the right person, because the person owns the towers or different than the cell carriers.
Okay. We have some WebEx ones now on the list. Do we have anybody ready to? Yeah, what? Okay, but Jason Evans on. Jason, are you there?
Commissioners, hi, good evening. My name is Jason Evans, and I am here representing J5 Infrastructure Partners at 3327 North Eagle Road, Meridian, Idaho. J5 Infrastructure Partners is the real estate development firm for AT&amp;T. We are working with Vertical Bridge on co-locating our equipment on the proposed site that is in reference this evening. A couple of questions came up regarding additional sites and other sites that were looked at, part of the alternative candidate review. AT&amp;T did ultimately look at the Horizon Tower site that is in the city of Star, near their wastewater treatment facility, but that did not provide the necessary coverage for the north part of Star, which is the coverage objective for this location. We also did look at the SBA site that is at Highway 16 and Highway 44. That, again, did not provide the necessary coverage to the north of Star, which is what the current objective was. We also did look at the ambulance facility at that tower site there, and again, it did not meet the objective. So we are in support of this location as it will provide customer service to AT&amp;T providers in that immediate area.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So what documentation have you provided to the board that AT&amp;T has an identified need?
As you can see, I believe Josh provided the coverage maps that our engineering firm, our engineering representative who is on the WebEx tonight as well, plotted those engineering studies to show where coverage was lacking and what the coverage would be after the fact. So that is part of the presentation with which was presented to the committee.
And how do those computer-generated propagation studies account for the in-building coverage? Or lack there?
Because we have to, all AT&amp;T's antennas and all of their equipment are required to work within the FCC guidelines, and the FCC guidelines have a certain amount of output that is required, or maximum per antenna, for example, and that shows the distance from the proposed location within the threshold from the FCC-licensed equipment. So it shows what the penetration would be inside of a building, outside of a building, inside of a car, for example. So that is part of the engineering software that's proprietary for AT&amp;T that shows what that coverage would be.
So it was brought to our attention that possibly we need to add to our code, to add data to the propagation study. Can you speak to that?
I am not a RF engineer, a radio frequency engineer, so I could not speak to that.
Thank you.
But we do have one who is probably coming up after me, who might be able to assist with that as well.
Okay, and who would that be?
His name is Shad, and I think Shad is, he is on listening, and we're coming up afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jason? If not, Chad Riedelch? Okay, Chad, are you there? Chad?
Need to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Chad.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Shad Riedelch. I live in Rigby, Idaho. I'm the RF engineer for AT&amp;T. I am the engineer that provided the coverage predictions that are used in the presentation. They are based on a computer calculation. The models have several inputs. I think the data source inputs that are most critical to these calculations is we have a terrain model that represents the terrain, the elevation of the ground. Second, we have inputs for describing what's on the ground. Is it a road? Is it a field? Is it a field? Is it light industrial? Is it a home? Is it an airport? Is it a venue? Homes and buildings for business typically have different construction, wood versus concrete or metal. We send out a team that drive tests in the area. We have several sites throughout the state. We calculate an average of the transmitter power, the free space loss, and the amount of energy that's lost getting a radio signal inside of a structure. There again, it's qualified as what is at that particular geographic location. We do an average of a space, it's 100-meter space. We call it a bin. It's just a dot on a map. Based on those inputs, the calculation returns how strong our signal is expected to be. And from that data, we can show our existing coverage predictions, where we expect to have good coverage outdoor, indoor, in a vehicle, versus when we place a potential new site, and we run the same calculations with that new facility added in. We're able to evaluate different locations to determine which location will fit our needs the best. In this particular application, we just provided the coverage map of the site that we are asking Vertical Bridge to build for us to co-locate on. I think that, unless you have some more specific questions about the coverage predictions or any other questions, I'm just available to answer the questions. But I think the coverage predictions was a pretty hot topic tonight.
All right, is there any questions from the board?
No, not for you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Chad.
Hank, you need to unmute.
There we go. How do I share a video?
Should we get to share from the top left of the screen?
Look, I gotta share my screen here. It's not allowing me to share my screen.
You want to share your screen? What exactly does it say?
It's showing my video, but it doesn't give me an option to share my screen with you guys. I have a share, but I want to share the actual desktop screen, like you do in Zoom. I'm sorry, guys. So anyways, I know we're on a time crunch. This is really killing me. I can't share my screen. But anyways, you have that propagation study that the plaintiff shared with you. I actually took that, and unlike the RF engineer or the attorneys, I'm kind of a boots-on-the-ground guy, I actually own a meter that took these readings. I went out to the proposed site of the tower, and I put my meter on the top of my truck and took a reading at the site. And if you look at that propagation study, you'll see the RSSI DVMs, and they're all very high. They're negative 37, or some of the AT&amp;T, T-Mobile's negative 65, Verizon's negative 72. Anything higher than negative 80 is sufficient coverage, right? So there's plenty of coverage out there. I just went on to my Onex GPS software, and there's a tower just sitting right up on top of Blessinger Lane and Willis Road. It's about a 100-foot tower that's to the north, and it's 1.6 miles to the north of where this proposed tower is. Went up there, took readings, and that's the ideal place to co-locate to. The attorney didn't even mention that tower. And that one is to the north, it's perfectly located, and it would for surely provide any kind of future expansion or bandwidth that you may need. The concept of in-building coverage, I want to see the law on that. That's a big, big term right there. Hey, we've changed things. I want to see where that law is from that attorney, because in-building coverage versus out-of-building coverage is a very, very big difference. And the law has been, it's been outdoor coverage. Was there sufficient coverage there on-site right now? So we need to really dive into that. Commissioner Kendra Kenyon, you made comment about the 2019 Eagle cell tower, and that Ada County lost that one. In my information that I submitted earlier, I actually have the consent order judgment from that case when you were talking about the Ada County lost because they denied a cell tower. And the only reason Ada County lost on that case was because they did not bring an RF engineer with them, showing that there was sufficient coverage at the Eagle site. And they did not debate this fact. So that the whole premise about this tower, it all comes down to this significant gap in coverage. Is there a gap in coverage? And as you can see from my information that I presented to you, I wish I could give it to you on my screen here, there is no gap in coverage. I would be more than willing to take any one of you guys out there, use the meter, you can look at it. There is no gap in coverage outside. You can make a cellphone coverage or a cellphone call from all three carriers. Now, if the AT&amp;T or the engineer from Rigby, Idaho wants to come down and stand there, boots-on-the-ground, and show us that there's no coverage, well, now we got something to talk about. But let's see what that drive test looks like and prove that there's no coverage. And beyond that, let's go back to co-locating. There's towers within location that you can co-locate on that will give you perfect coverage. Thank you.
All right. Any questions from?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Where was the tower that you identified that you thought was a co-located?
Yeah, so if you go Blessinger Road north, and you go just past Willis Road, you can see it sitting up there on top of the mountain there. And actually, because of the height, it's much safer, and it's in a perfect location. And there's plenty of room for more antennas to go onto that tower. Blessinger and north of Willis Road.
And you said it's 1.6 miles?
It's 1.6 miles as the crow flies, correct.
And it's higher in elevation?
Oh, yeah, much higher.
And is it surrounded by homes or potential subdivisions?
No, no, it's actually next to, I think it's a Cowboy Church that's up there. And it's a bit, it's an old rodeo rink-looking thing. And obviously, it's on their private property, but that would be the best site, in my opinion, for putting this.
Thank you.
These antennas for AT&amp;T to fill their needs.
Any other questions of Hank? No. Okay, thank you, Hank.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Ann Heike. She here?
She told me she no longer wishes to present for the project.
Okay.
And neither does Mary Shaw.
Well, they're done, okay. Kathy, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Could you state your name for the record?
Yes, Kathy Cook. I live in Boise, Idaho. So I am a building biologist and electromagnetic radiation specialist practicing in Ada County. So I am an expert in measuring and mitigating radio frequency microwave radiation exposures. So I just wanted to mention a couple of things that have been brought up tonight. The applicant referenced Section 253 of the Federal Communications Act, which is a common reference to make, but he conveniently left off subsection C of the Telecommunications Act, which is just two paragraphs down from where he stated. Subsection C says, "State and local government authority." Nothing in this section affects the authority of a state or local government to manage the public rights of way. So I think that's important to note. Also, the FCC is not involved in mandating cellphone coverage inside people's homes as the applicant has indicated. Personally, I don't want AT&amp;T's radio frequencies or any company's radio frequencies imposed inside my home without my consent, and we have a right to say so. And I don't, you know, the applicant mentioned he has a couple teenagers. I don't know a parent on this earth who wants their teenage children to use their phone more. So that's kind of a moot argument. This is why people have Wi-Fi inside their homes and Internet coverage. And, you know, most people that I know inside their homes, if they're using their phones, they're actually connected to their Wi-Fi, not cellular data, for multiple reasons. And then, lastly, you know, the propagation study that's been brought up multiple times tonight, again, that is a very accurate thing that we need to consider here. And I've heard industry legal teams mention this numerous times, that these propagation studies are what they use, but they are clearly not adequate at all. It's just the game that they play to get something in front of you, because most of us aren't electrical engineers, and we don't know the difference. We need data here, we need a drive study. And it is perfectly within your rights to require that in order to, you know, as part of the application. So for all these reasons, I recommend that the application be denied.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The appellant mentioned that part of their study did include a drive test.
I heard that, but it doesn't, it appears as though it was submitted into the application.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That concludes the testimony from the, those that have submitted online or signed up online. Is there anyone in the room that didn't get a chance to sign up online that would like to testify? Didn't you testify? Oh, it was the other one, okay, go ahead, sure. Give us your name again for the record.
My name is Kevin Kless, 1634 West Martha Street, Boise, Idaho. I am giving testimony, so you have heard my credentials before. Since I am giving testimony, I will be honest that I am tired. I will do my best, sir. So once again, thank you, the Honorable Commission, for having me testify. I see, I noticed that your hands are bound for, as far as talking about health risk, and it's not in your purview, as mentioned earlier before. But I do think it is necessary to mention some of that, because it is a real issue, and it's in people's hearts, and it's in the community's minds. And I hope that the legislation and the codes can evolve for that, to handle that. It does seem that the tides are turning, and especially with the recent Court of Appeals decision in August that is rescinding the original 1996 Telecommunications Act. I think that this is a great opportunity to look at the codes and to actually look and develop how to adjust for thorough, rigorous propagation studies. And that's what I think is really needed here. So, I mean, it gets very vague. I was not only just a chief of operational testing and evaluation, I was also an acquisitions officer. So we had tons of different contractors, Lockheed Martin, Raytheon and whatnot, come to our table and pitch their wares. And whenever we came to the propagation study, and they started saying computer models, and started saying the word "proprietary," we said, "There's the door." We need actual propagation studies that actually you go out in the field and you measure physically, and we need that data, because that's where it matters. I'd like to bring up an aspect about propagation studies. There's a phenomenon called multi-casting. And that means if I have one antenna in one location, it'll affect any type of conductive material around in that environment. This is the dangerous thing which has happened with 5G. There's a big, huge learning curve involved with this technology and its implementation. And one thing that is not being looked at thoroughly is its impact on the local environment. If you're going to do a propagation study, you have to take the field measurements at the actual site of the actual materials involved and all the conductors involved that are involved, because they have an effect as well, too. So I think that there's a great opportunity to further advocate for an independent group that can actually do these propagation studies, in preparation for right now. But I think as of now, this does not suffice for an adequate propagation study. So I think that this tower should be denied, and the appeal should go pro. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lind, if you'd like to wrap it up. And you can use your advisor there, Mr. DeHos. You have five minutes, go ahead.
To wrap this up, I just want to make a couple points. And this goes back to my original argument. Number one, there are existing towers within a short distance of the proposed tower that the carrier's equipment can be co-located on. There needs to be more, the applicant did not prove that there wasn't. They sent out requests to co-locate on the proposed tower, not go out and actually see if they can run down a location to co-locate their tower. So that's one thing. Number two is, I can go home, I live a half a mile north of the proposed tower site. I have an AT&amp;T phone. I can go in my house, I can turn on and go to the carrier's network, I can download off websites, I can get phone calls, and I can get texts with no problem. I can do it right now, I can drive home and do it right now. So that is physical proof that there is no gap in coverage there. So, and another thing I want to say is, first of all, real quick, people are making decisions on it, they're applying for this application. The attorney representing the applicant is, wants that tower in, but I'm the one, and others in that area are the one living there. We know the cellphone coverage, what the cellphone coverage is. I'm not an engineer in Rigby, Idaho. So I just want to thank you for your time tonight, and I cede the rest of my time to David DeHos.
Okay, Mr. DeHos.
Yes, to follow up on that, there's been no real data, again. Those maps were nice and colored, but there was, normally a drive test would be done by an independent third party, number one. And there'd be a drive test with a meter, as Kathy Cook mentioned and Hank mentioned. So we've done more on our side to show propagation study than they have. All they have is a nice colored map, but normally it would say like, "We have minus 93 dB here, we have minus 70 dBm here." They didn't show any of that in this application, and why would they? The applicant is basically, in terms of a real estate speculator. They're putting a tower up hoping to get a tenant. Why would they want to locate, they don't want to locate another tower, it's not in their best interest. They want to put the tower up so they can get tenants to pay them money for their real estate. So they have no incentive whatsoever to prove this, and they have done not. They've not done that. And under the federal communications law, you need to have a real drive test with real data. You have no data whatsoever that's provided to you, so the applicant has not fulfilled his duty to prove this. They talk about proprietary. No, you need to have, you need to lay out your cards, you need to show what we've got here, and that has not been done by the applicant. So again, I think you have all the information you need to deny this application, because there's not been any real data given to you. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. DeHos? No, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, hearing no, unless there's anyone else that would like to, that's here in the room that hasn't spoken yet? Nope, hearing none, nobody online, correct? Okay. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing on application 202103048-A, William Lind. The appeal, the plating is on the The appeal, the plannings on the commission's approval of a conditional use to construct a 100-foot commercial cell tower. Okay, the hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the board? Or does anyone wants to discuss it?
I have a concern with these propagation maps, and I did ask staff to double-check to see if there was anything else surprising that it's just, you know, one, kind of two blobs without any real data to support it. And we did have the similar propagation maps come before us with a cell tower approval and said that they quote-unquote could prove the need. And then they came back two years later, or a year, maybe two years later to this board, asking for an extension because they didn't really need it. And so I'm really concerned that we don't have adequate data to make these decisions. The other thing is, I think that the original applicant failed to exhaust all possibilities to co-locate. Like what was stated tonight in testimony, they sent out letters to co-locate with them but did not take a look at who's out there that they could co-locate with. And that would be the carriers. Obviously, the applicant is in the business of building a tower and then, you know, selling it to the providers of services. So I think that they failed to make those attempts. I also feel like they didn't take a look at a potential site that was identified by Mr. Hank Allen tonight on the Willis Road, and I think that needs to be explored. The last thing I want to do is put a 100-foot cell tower in a residential property. It's the very last thing we want to do. We want to exhaust all other possibilities. And I just don't feel that the applicant has done enough to prove that this is the best location or to prove that there is an actual need from the carriers. And I think that the propagation study is not sufficient in my mind. So I'm going to be wanting to make a motion to approve the appellant's application of return planning and zonings.
Okay, is there any other comments?
Well, I guess a question to staff. I mean, as far as what was submitted, I mean, regarding the studies, data, what's the most we can wrap our heads around here? What's the most meat on the bone that they've provided is to verify that they've complied?
So Chairman Beck, Commissioner Davidson, as part of their requirements, basically it says that it shall be the burden of the applicant to demonstrate that the proposed facility cannot be accommodated on an approved tower or structure within two-mile search radius due to one of the more following reasons. So there's different reasons. Could be anything from unwillingness of the property owner or facility owner to entertain shared use. And you can look at this in the findings as well. Everything from the equipment would cause additional interference with materials already there. So there are reasons just, you know, other than just they don't want to co-locate at this tower. The applicant has provided that they are, they've shown that there's a radius of two miles where they have reached out to the federal agencies as well, ACHD, government agencies, that were not willing to provide them a location to place the tower. That's the most I can give you. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
No, it does. I just, I do feel like we're getting to a place where we might need to be a little more stringent on making the applicant meet the burden of proof. And, you know, there is obviously a community interest, a lot of testimony, people want more data. They want more transparency, more information on, to know that, you know, all other remedies have been exhausted. And so it's maybe if we're looking at this a little more stringently, that we want the cellphone companies to provide us with a little more information. I think that's, I probably tend to agree with Commissioner Kenyon.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, based on what we heard tonight, testimony and documents, I'm going to move to approve the appellant's application 202103048-A and overturn the planning and zoning commission decision. And direct staff to prepare findings, facts, and conclusions a lot consistent with our decision. And this is based on the fact that, again, I don't feel that they've exhausted all the resources to co-locate or that this is the best location, being in a residential area. And we'll, that's it. Let you do it.
Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second that, and I'll also add on, there was concerns with the aesthetics of it. We heard the testimony about probable subdivisions being built around. So the aesthetic aspect of this was taking that into consideration as well. But I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Okay, and one thing that did concern me is if there's another adequate cell tower within 1.6 miles and it's higher up that would provide coverage, that seemed to be, that would be a co-location. And I don't know why we didn't pursue that. But anyway, we heard the motion, and it's duly in front of us. All in favor, say aye.
One second, Commissioner Beck. Did we want to table this for revised findings to reflect your decision to?
Today.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if you would let us table that to an open business meeting, we could table it potentially to the 31st, give Connor enough time to write those findings for you.
The 31st? Okay, I'll go ahead and include that in my motion to table it to the 31st to have staff prepare the additional findings.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. We'll be adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.